Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The January 3rd, 2022 Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anorondal County Council is now in session. I'd like to start with a few remarks. There has been some media coverage regarding masks and mandates. As Chair, I do apologize for any confusion that this coverage may have caused. I can assure everyone that under the Charter and our rules of procedure, anytime a bill is introduced, it must be scheduled to come back on another day for a public hearing. Certain urgent emergency bills have to wait three days for this, but most bills do not come back until two meetings later to allow for a state mandated advertising requirements. Any bill introduced tonight will come back at a subsequent meeting. So we have a lot to go through tonight, and we are eager to hear from everyone. To the public, each opportunity tonight will give you two minutes to make your points. Start with your name and address. When your time is up, I will allow you to finish your sentence before moving on to the next speaker. It goes without saying that I cannot allow personal defamatory or profane remarks or abusive language that disturbs the orderly conduct of this meeting. To the council, we all need to be mindful of time. We have 12 bills on the agenda tonight, so we'll have to use the next six hours wisely. If we go past midnight, we cannot amend or vote on any bills. So thank you for adhering to those special requests. We will now pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will be giving the invocation this evening. I actually have chosen a poem by poet laureate Amanda Gorman called "New Day's Lyric." "May this be the day we come together; morning we come to mend; withered we come to weather; torn we come to tend; battered we come to better; tethered by this year of yearning, we are learning; that though we weren't ready for this, we have been readied by it. We steadily vow that no matter how we are weighed down, we must always pave a way forward. This hope is our door, our portal. Even if we never get back to normal, someday we can venture beyond it to leave the known and take the first steps. So let us not return to what was normal, but reach towards what is next. What was cursed, we will cure; what was plagued, we will prove pure. Where we tend to argue, we will try to agree. Those fortunes we foreswore, now the future we foresee. Where we aren't aware, now we are now awake. Those moments we missed are now these moments we make. The moments we meet, and our hearts all at once together beaten, now altogether beat. Come, look up with kindness yet, for even solace can be sourced from sorrow. We remember, not just for the sake of yesterday, but to take on tomorrow. We heed this old spirit in new day's lyric; in our hearts we hear it. For old lang syne, my dear, for old lang syne, be bold, sang, be bold, sang, time; for when you honor yesterday, tomorrow ye will find; know what we fought. Need not be forgotten, nor for none; it defines us, binds us as one. Come over, join this day just begun; for wherever we come together, we will forever overcome." And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Here.
Mr. Volkey.
Here.
Mr. Pruski. Mr. Pruski is having internet troubles. Certain he'll be joining us again as soon as he gets that resolved. Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Radveen.
Present.
Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Ms. Schewitt.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have six council members present. We have Mr. Pruski trying to rejoin the meeting. We have our county auditor and legislative council in attendance.
Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in anapolis at the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act compliance board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed with the clerk and considered by the council, and now allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it's not necessary to suspend the rules of procedure for the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the media and the public or the location of the council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this meeting to be held. Madam Chair, I will note, I am aware there are some audio troubles this evening with cable. The good cable people are looking into that.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about the lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
All right, we will now open our invitation to audience. Before I invite our members of the public to speak, I would like to remind everyone that this portion of the meeting is an opportunity for comments on matters that are not on our final agenda. We do have two bills on our agenda tonight that address mask mandates. If you are here to talk about this subject, please do so in general terms. If your testimony is specific to the bills on the agenda, in order to stay in line with our rules, I may ask you to hold that testimony for public hearings on those bills. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, through our online testimony tool and other ways, we've received about 133 submissions of testimony. It's all been shared with the council, has been a summary has been posted on the website, and it's been added to the record.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District 3. I just received a text message from somebody in the county who's trying to watch, and as Ms. Corby noted, there are audio issues. So again, I'm going to reiterate the points that I made earlier in private discussion, which were, I think that there are some access issues that exist with conducting this meeting in this forum at this time. But I just wanted to share that in case there are other people who are having those same problems, so that the record is clear that we, I guess, are understanding that those issues exist and still proceeding.
Well, Madam Chair, may I propose just a few moment break here so that we can try and figure out what's going on? I understand that too many people are being impacted by the audio troubles. We need to get to the bottom of that.
That would be fine. Could I have a motion for maybe, what do you think, five or 10-minute recess?
I would hope no more than five minutes.
Okay, may I have a motion for a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess, Allison Pickard.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, we will be in recess until approximately 6:15. If my council colleagues could resume their, just, you know, come bring your attention back here. If you've got your camera to turn on, please turn on your camera. We're just going to talk for a minute. First, we're going to take a temporary pause in the invitation to audience, and I apologize profusely to those members of the public that are here waiting to testify. Obviously, we did not plan to have this technical difficulty, but we, this is where we are. So I greatly appreciate your patience. I'm very sorry that we've taken up your time this evening. What I would like to do is make a motion to my colleagues that we extend this recess until 7:15, when, at which time, hopefully, we will have our sound back. Those members of the public that are waiting to testify in the invitation to audience, you would sign back in at 7:15. And if that, if at that time, we do have our sound and our technical difficulties addressed, then we will proceed with our meeting. If not, we will have to reschedule the bills that are scheduled for tonight, and we will hold a very short administrative, just introduce bills, approve minutes, and the things that don't involve, or that don't require participation from the audience. So, and I see I have a question. So that's the motion on the floor. I guess we treat this as an ordinary motion. I guess, let's, is there someone that would second the motion? Oh.
Wait.
I know that was a very long motion. The motion is basically to go into recess until 7:15, ask those that are signed up for invitation to audience to sign out, and then come back at 7:15. If we have the sound issue addressed at that time, we will resume the meeting with invitation to audience. If we do not have the sound issues resolved at that time, we will close the invitation to audience, reschedule all of the bills that are on tonight's meeting, and, and go forward with the administrative aspects of the meeting, approving the minutes, introducing new bills. I'm just asking for a second, and then after that, can we discuss the motion?
Lacy, second.
Thank you. Before we vote on it, if I could, I hear, I saw Ms. Fiedler. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually a question probably for Office of Law. I know we had recent updates on the amount of outages this evening, power outages. I think we're around 8,000. I know that I have a community in St. Margaret's that has over 100 residents who are out of power. Would, would moving forward with this meeting in any fashion still be legally providing reasonable access, knowing the amount of power outages we have in the county?
Fiedler, I'm asking the county attorney to join us here. We have Ms. Blair Klassmeyer.
By default, I guess. Hi, Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. I'm, I'm not, I, I believe you said 8,000. We have 590,000 citizens. I wouldn't think that 8,000 people that don't have power would be an issue. I'm sure that at any given time, there's a number of people without power during any of these virtual meetings. So I would not be concerned about that as an issue under the Open Meetings Act.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, I guess, more of a point-of-order question, but it sounds like the proposal that you're making initially is that we take a break. So it's a motion to recess until 7:15 to see where we are. But then there was a component of it, which was a reorientation of the agenda. And I just want to be clear, the agenda cannot be reorganized unless there is a vote of five members to suspend the agenda and reorganize it. Is that correct? Once the agenda is set and the meeting is started, it can't just be moved around. You can't say, "We're going to close invitation to audience and reschedule that and come back." My understanding of the council rules of procedure is that the agenda itself, you would have to suspend that portion, and then you could move on to other portions.
Well, at this point, we, we don't have to suspend invitation to audience. We're really just taking a recess until 7:15. So I think we, the idea is that we would make a decision about where to go or how to go forward at that time. If, hoping we have sound, but acknowledging the possibility that we may not.
Understood, but I guess one of the predicates of the question was that you're going to wait until 7:15. But if at 7:15, the issue has not been resolved, then there was sort of a secondary thought process that was there. I just want to understand, in voting for this motion, is that something we can even do without five votes of the council?
Um, I guess, let me, Madam Parliamentarian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Linda Schewitt, Legislative Council. I think the best thing to do here is to have a simple motion to recess and then talk about what may hap, may or may not happen after 7:15 later.
All right, with that said, could I, let's see, we need to rewind our motion and second.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you. I just wanted to say for the record that the motion that I believed I was seconding was simply the motion to recess. I understood everything after the discussion about 7:15 to be a discussion about what we might do at 7:15.
I'm comfortable with that interpretation. Do we need to, Madam Parliamentarian, do we need to rewind and clarify the motion? Or can we move forward with the understanding that we have a motion to recess until 7:15, at which time we would come back and make a decision about how to proceed?
To make it as clear as possible, I think it's best for you to do the motion to recess until 7:15, get a second, and just move on that, and then vote on that.
But we have a motion on the floor, correct? So we need to address that somehow. So I will withdraw the motion on the floor if my seconder will withdraw their second.
Withdrawn.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard wasn't the seconder, Madam Chair, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. I actually think I heard Ms. Pickard, but maybe you, you both seconded. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to recess until 7:15. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Schewitt, but does this call for discussion? Or do you just vote this up or down?
Uh, Ms. Corby, has there been any history? I don't remember any discussion about a motion to.
I don't believe this qualifies as a debatable motion. I think we just need to, you just need to vote on it.
All right, then, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to recess until 7:15.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radveen.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to recess until 7:15 has passed.
On our meeting. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
My pleasure, Madam Chair. Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Here.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Radveen.
Present.
Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Ms. Schewitt.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have all council members in attendance, our county auditor and legislative council.
All right, thank you very much. Before we invite members of the public to speak, I actually said this before we opened the invitation to audience. I'd like to, um, yes, Ms. Fiedler.
I just wanted to follow up on a conversation before our recess. I understand that Office of Law feels that we are legally meeting the requirement for reasonable access of a meeting moving forward. I do have concerns. BGE just updated that we have 8,600 residents who are out. I don't think in any given council meeting day we would have that many residents without power who may or may not want to be able to participate or watch live. So just for the record, I do have serious concerns about the amount of residents who are not able to tune into this meeting this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. My understanding is that's less than 5%, and this meeting is being recorded. So anyone who's not able to tune in tonight will still be able to tune in at their convenience after the meeting. Before we invite members of the public to speak, I would like to remind everyone that this portion of the meeting is an opportunity for comments on matters not on our final agenda. We do have two bills on our agenda tonight that address mask mandates. If you are here to talk about this subject, please do so in general terms. If your testimony is specific to the bills on the agenda, in order to stay in line with our rules, I may ask you to hold that testimony for the public hearings on these bills. They will be scheduled for a future date. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, again, we've received about 133 submissions of testimony through the online testimony tool. It's all been shared with the council, posted online. It's a summary of that testimony, and it has been added to the record.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have 26 individuals signed up to speak at this time. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Do we have Ms. Kristen Caminiti? I see her there. Ms. Caminiti, you may begin.
She was unmuted. Kristen, let your, unmute yourself again.
I unmuted, and then it said you muted.
Oh, sorry, I think we're playing with buttons here. My apologies.
No worries, no worries. You can, you can hear me? Okay, I'm Kristen Caminiti. My address is 2307 Sebastian Court, Ambrose, Maryland. Honorable members of the county council, to you tonight as a fellow parent, a fellow sibling, daughter or son, and fellow citizen of Anorondal County. I speak to your humanity. I'm confident that despite the fact that some of us disagree on many issues, I believe strongly that you are all caring people who want what is best for the people of Anorondal County and the state of Maryland. And so I speak to you tonight and ask that you put aside partisan politics, and you listen to my words as the caring human beings you are. Just yesterday, our governor said on national news that the next four to six weeks may be the worst of this entire pandemic. He detailed how overloaded our hospitals are. He explained how exhausted our healthcare workers are, and yet, he isn't moving to mandate masks or take additional precautions. Our failure of leadership at the top does not give you permission to fail in your leadership. A mask mandate is a simple, easy, and effective measure our county can take to help lessen the load on our hospitals. It sends the message to our healthcare workers that we are all doing what we can to lessen the strain on each of them. If we don't send messages loud and clear to our healthcare, that we, we will lose many of them. We are already facing a shortage of nurses. Doctors are leaving the profession out of exhaustion. I want our best nurses and doctors to remain a part of this noble profession. I want them to know how much we value them. I want them to be there for me, for you, and for each of our loved ones when we need them. Right now, my brother is battling cancer for the third time. It is terrifying for him to think about needing care for his cancer and not being able to get it because of an exhausted, demoralized healthcare workforce who feels forgotten by our leaders. I don't want that terror for anyone, now or in the future. The future of our entire medical system depends on leaders making wise and caring decisions now. This is not about your views on COVID-19. It is about doing what is right for all those in the, in the medical field and in our community who are at great risk. Please do your small part and choose to continue the county executive's mask mandate until COVID-19 is no longer spreading at such a dangerous rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caminiti. I, I do see Mr. Volkey has his hand up. I'm going to ask that we, I will call on you once we're finished with the invitation to audience. I know our members who have signed up to testify have already waited a very long time, so I'd like to let them proceed at this time. Next up, we have Melissa Idelman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, sorry, same thing, I unmuted, and then I got muted again. All right, I'm Melissa Idelman, 8245 Fairwood Drive, Pasadena, Maryland. I decided to make public testimony today to provide the council some perspective from the public who is overwhelmed and extremely tired by the policies put on them in many avenues of their lives. I'm representing myself and my group Moms for Liberty of Anorondal County. We are a group of parents who have come together to help fight, get our schools back to normal for the sake of our children's mental health and their right to public education. We know this council doesn't have power over our BOE and the policies they have come up with, but we feel your decisions on the community indirectly affect our schools' decisions. We see a follow-the-leader type approach as well with the different counties in Maryland, and have been so proud of the most recent events that took place by our BOE to set a different precedent. We feel it is time to speak up to the council in supporting of ending many COVID policies after our county executive issued a civil emergency to mask for seven days. I fully believe most individuals have well intentions in solving issues, but we feel you cannot continue making policies that proven not to work. Sometimes doing nothing when everything you have done didn't do much to stop the spread may be the answer. Maryland, like our public schools, to be in shambles of some sort, of some sort. Our system and people working them are overloaded with what I personally like to call the COVID workload. You have mandated companies and the public to take on burdens of your failed policies at the cost of many of them losing their livelihoods. Many times, these companies or individuals didn't even have the supply, the time, or the money for the demand of things they needed to implement your policies when COVID first started. I speak from personal experience when I speak today as a single mother of four children who has been desperately trying to keep up with a simple life, not a business. The everyday things required by me to do for my children just to live, just to attend school, just to go to sports, just to be out in public has been overwhelming. It is completely draining and at the cost of my livelihood as well as my children's mental state at times. We ask that you please stop giving the same solutions to issues revolving COVID. We are going on year two, and this madness of trying to do the same thing and expecting different results needs to end. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Idelman. I understand that Ms. Fitzpatrick is not present, so we will go on to Michael Brown.
Thank you. Michael Brown, 7651 Timbercross Lane, Glenburn, Maryland. I, I mean, I agree with the mask mandate, but in regards to the civil emergency that was declared last week, I think the council.
I'm sorry I have to interrupt, but because those items are on the agenda, I need you to speak about masks generally instead of mandates and the civil emergency because those things will be discussed in a public hearing at a later matter. So if you could remain general in your terms.
All right, thank you. Next thing is, I'm curious as to what information the county, the county health department is using to calculate cases per 100,000 on their website. They are not using the most recent data from the 2020 census. I have been following this data. I've been verifying their data. It does not come up right. With, with that data, I urge the council to, to look into that because it does change the number of cases, between two and four cases per 100,000. And lastly, the snowplow status map, that was working last year. I just looked this evening, it's not working today. It's saying it's, it's going to be available sometime soon. So my question to the council was, why all of a sudden is this not working when it was working last year? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next on our list, we have Gina Witcher. So is Ms. Witcher here? All right, not hearing any signs of Ms. Witcher. Laura Carlisle would be next. Oh, I'm sorry, Kalise. You must get that all the time, my bad.
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Laura Kalise, 12 Berlin in Arnold. And I want to, I encourage the council to enact an emergency indoor masking order. On December 30th, Dr. Schellinger, the chief. On December 30th, Dr. Schellinger, the Chief Medical Officer of AMC, said, we are at a tipping point in our hospitals in Maryland. They went from 18 COVID patients at Thanksgiving to 95 before the new year. This isn't just a crisis for those seeking COVID treatment. If, if my child had broken her arm sledding today, how long would we have waited for treatment with an overwhelmed ER? Could we have gotten treatment? We have to get this surge under control and despite what a very vocal minority of contrarians insists, masking works to reduce community spread and it works best as source control and when it's universal. Studies and health organizations across the globe had reached the same conclusion based on the evidence. Now civilized free society has rights, but they also have responsibilities. Masking is our best shot of fulfilling both our obligations to protect our vulnerable neighbors, our hospitals, our first responders, while causing the least disruption to our schools and economy, which need healthy, reliable staff and healthy, confident consumers to function. You were elected to serve the common good of our whole community and nihilism isn't a governing strategy. We all wish the pandemic were over and there would be no more surges, no more disruptions to our lives, but wishful thinking isn't reality and you owe it to your constituents to operate in reality. Please have the courage to look this, this reality in the face and act. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kalise. I do see that I have two colleagues with flags up, but I will be waiting until after we've finished public testimony to take any questions from my colleagues. I also need to remind members who are testifying because of the unique circumstances that we have two pieces of legislation that have been introduced surrounding the topic of mask mandates. I ask that you speak generally on the topic of masks and not address mandates in order to comply with our council rules. And I realize that it's, it's difficult to hear me asking you to do that while you're speaking, so I'm just sending that reminder up ahead of time. Next, we have Ms. Dana Schultz.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order.
Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. You, you've indicated that people can speak on certain topics but not others. And then you've cut off speakers who are speaking on a topic, but then other speakers, when you've attempted to cut them off, have continued to speak. There's no uniformity in the way this is being controlled. So if you have a speaker who is speaking on a topic that you don't believe is germane or is, is appropriately before the council, then I think the proper recourse, if they can't hear you, is to turn off their microphone. So I'm not sure why we're not doing that. That's what we would do if we were in the council chambers. So as a point of order, I want to understand how is this meeting being run in terms of carrying over on, on what is and what is not germane?
Fair question, Mr. Volkey. I do not have the power on this Zoom to turn off the microphone of any speaker. That would be the host. So I will take note and ask that the host turn off the microphone once I've asked a speaker that they need to, you know, accommodate their speaking in order to fit the, the rules that we must follow tonight. So point taken.
Madam Chair, I will follow your lead going forward. I will mute people if you interrupt their testimony for not being in line with the invitation to audience rules.
Thank you, Ms. Corby. All right, next we have, I'm sorry, Ms. Dana Schultz.
Dana Schultz, 1320 Shawnee Court, Millersville, Maryland. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'm a combat war veteran, wife of 26 years and mother of three children. A single solution is not the answer, especially if people have natural immunity from previously fighting COVID-19. Every American is capable of medical and economic decisions. The high-risk individuals, those with heart disease, diabetes, chronic lung disease, are wise enough to protect themselves and limit their exposures. Social factors such as unstable housing, limited nutritious food, inadequate transportation, and low socioeconomic status increase COVID risks. Shutdowns and mandates increase socioeconomic risks. Business and school closures have contributed to increasing suicide and drug overdoses, especially with youth and young adults who are at a decreased risk of COVID. Suicide is prevented through economic, mental health, immunity, social and emotional support. Mandates and closures decrease all of these supports. Masks are harmful, do not prevent the spread of viruses, germs, and they increase the viral load to the wearer. The Brown University study concluded that wearing masks is blamed for a disturbing 23% fall in young children's development and cognitive test results. Masks are harmful to children's ability to learn. Properly fitted N95 masks are safe for only up to three hours. Give parents their right to decide. People younger than 70 years old have a 99.95% recovery rate against COVID. Follow the science and stop the fear-based excuse to increase the power of our government. Early treatment therapies for COVID improve outcomes. Distribute prevention and early treatment information to help our citizens fight the disease, not grovel in fear. A single solution is not the answer. My friends died to support and defend our inalienable rights upheld by the United States Constitution. Mandates do not help citizens. Give each person their right to decide how to conduct their healthcare and business transactions. Do not close businesses. Do not mandate vaccines. Do not impose mandates. A single solution is not the answer, especially if people have natural immunity from previously fighting COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I see that Haley Mark is not present, so we'll go on to our next speaker, Bonnie Fitzpatrick.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I want to talk about the mask mandate that's sort of putting into effect. Last time he did this.
Fitzpatrick, Ms. Fitzpatrick, I just need to remind you that you, you are able to speak about masks generally, but because those, there are two items on our agenda relating to mask mandates, you are not able to speak on, on the topic of mandates. So speak about masks as much as you wish, but mandates will have to be covered another day. You may proceed. Ms. Fitzpatrick, it appears that you're still muted.
Can you hear me? Someone keeps muting me.
Oh, she's trying to unmute you and you're probably doing it at the same time. So you're good now. You may proceed.
Okay. What I don't, doesn't make sense about masks is at my place of employment, I have to wear a mask. But the people I'm serving can come in, sit down, not wear a mask, cough and do whatever, but I have to wear a mask, which makes no sense. So it should be one or the other. Everyone wears a mask, whether eating or drinking, when you take a sip, put it back on, or nobody wears a mask. I'm wearing a mask for eight to 10 hours a day when people are not even wearing a mask when they come in. They have put it on to go to the bathroom. They put it on to walk outside to their vehicle, but as soon as they're sitting down in a chair at my establishment, they don't have to wear a mask, which makes no sense. Sorry, the school was calling to say they're closed tomorrow and it knocked me out.
I got it.
But the kid, even the kids in school, like for instance, my son, he wears a mask all day long, but in the cafeterias at school, they don't have a mask on. It's just, you either need to put mask all the time or no time because it makes no sense. If you're sitting in a restaurant and you're coughing on me as I'm serving you, I can still get the virus, but I have to wear it eight to 10 hours, but no one sitting in there has to, which makes no sense. They're talking, they're coughing, they're eating, they're drinking. They don't have to wear a mask. What's the point of making people wear masks? And a lot of times, people don't want to come into your establishment. They have to wear masks. So then small businesses are losing money. People quit. People aren't making money. I have people working at my establishment that are quitting because the mask mandate came back in because they know people won't come in. They can't make any money. It's just ridiculous. Seven days, 30 days, it's not helping. The kids have masks going to school, they're still getting sick. The masks do not help at all. Washing hands helps. We need to have a mandate. You need to wash your hands because that's the problem. It's not mask. Masks are ridiculous. It does nothing but make its kids sicker. I've been in the schools. I help at the school. Kids are sneezing and coughing in masks. And if they ask to take it off to blow their nose, they get yelled at. So what is the mask helping? Honestly, all I was doing is keeping the germs inside the mask. So we need to get rid of it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Next, we have Oscar Baca. And.
And Mr. Baca registered for everything this evening. There, it's possible there was a bit of confusion about. So anyway, he's not here at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Next, then I see, and I see his name here, Sean Tabalozzi.
Hello, yes. Sean Tabalozzi, 1203 Ella Cott Avenue, Churchton, Maryland. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, awesome. All right. I am concerned lockdowns, keeping kids from in-person schools are coming back on the table. COVID can't be eradicated according to Dr. Fauci. So when does this end? I don't question motives, but I do wonder why continue to panic considering the amazing medical advances we have. The latest data shows Omicron is the most, is, is more transmissible. However, CNN.com reported most symptoms are cough, fatigue and runny nose. That is a cold and we don't shut down over runny noses. There are numerous publicly available studies that show Omicron is much less deadly than Delta and is anywhere between 40 to 75% less likely to hospitalize. The virus is weakening. Emergency orders can't last forever because emergencies don't last forever. Restrictions in 2020 stunk because they were the only tools available due to no vaccines. However, those conditions are long gone. Government can endlessly tell us how to live. CDC numbers show vaccinated odds of hospitalization are 1 in 13,000 and the odds of death are lower. According to Johns Hopkins, 71% of male drivers are fully vaccinated. To our perspective, odds of getting hit by lightning are 1 in 12,000. Think about that. The onus is on individuals now since there are free vaccines. A statement from WHO on 22 December showed the vast majority of hospitalizations and deaths are unvaxxed, not vaxxed people, even without boosters. And according to U.S. News, unvaxxed make up 96% of hospitalizations. I have no vitriol toward unvaccinated individuals as they have the right to not take a vaccine. I get hospitals are busy and I say this very gently. Hospitals administrators are the ones responsible for navigating patient influx. The life of the vaccinated restaurant owner in Annapolis shouldn't be uprooted because of the medical decisions of others. Also, it is time to stop burdening and stealing our children's memories with canceled events and endless masking and realize their risk from COVID is almost non-existent. Zero COVID policies have real impact on your constituents' livelihood. It's wrong to deny liberties to all based on the medical decisions of others now that there are vaccines. If you want to convince people to get vaccinated, then those elected need to lead from the front and show us they trust them by eliminating zero COVID policies and letting vaccines do their job. I thank God for the vaccines and medicines he has provided us. We should thank him by not living in fear of COVID, but realizing if we get it, the vast majority of us will be fine. Thank you for your time. I may God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Tabalozzi. Next on our list is Mr. Chris Rong, and I do see your name, Mr. Rong. You may unmute yourself and proceed speaking.
Thank you, council members. I am strongly opposed to the council allowing the current arbitrary and useless mask mandate imposed by county executive.
Ms. Rong, again, I need to remind you that because mandates are on our agenda as items that were introduced this evening, I just ask you to speak generally on the topic of masks.
Mask mandates do not protect the public and have been proven time and again, do not reduce the spread of the Wuhan virus.
Ms. Rong, again, I need to remind you, we're not talking about mandates. We will have hearings on the bills that address specific mandates once they're scheduled on another date. So you may speak on masks generally, but not on the mandates. Ms. Rong, you may unmute yourself and proceed if you wish.
It is not physically healthy for adults to wear these masks throughout their day, whether the person is working, shopping, driving, or working out. And it is especially physically unhealthy for children to wear masks, whether they are at home or at school or playing with friends. And it is emotionally unhealthy for adults and especially emotionally unhealthy for developing children to wear masks and for their caregivers to be wearing masks. People emotionally need to communicate face to face and children need that supportive, loving, face-to-face communication. I understand that this virus and its various mutations have overwhelmed and frightened people. Perhaps you, members of the council, are also frightened. And I agree that we should remember and assist our hard-working healthcare workers and first responders. But another ridiculous and useless mask mandate will not help. Thank you. Chris Rong, 851 Buckingham Cove Road in Severna Park.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Ms. Rong, go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
So I, I'm not clear on this because I understand the position the chair has taken, but if I could get some clarification either from the chair or potentially Ms. Corby, my understanding of the rule about what's on the agenda in testimony is that if an item is on the agenda to be debated and to be voted on and to have public hearing on it, then we don't let people talk about it in invitation to audience because it would be duplicative. You'd hear it once in invitation to audience, you'd hear it a second time on the bill. I don't understand how these items that are being introduced as legislation qualifies as being on the agenda. They're not on the agenda other than the fact that they appear there to show that they're being introduced. They're not, they're not up for public hearing. They're not up for debate. There's nothing about them. So if I could get some clarification from Ms. Corby, because my understanding is this has never been the policy of this council.
I'd actually like to direct that question to Ms. Schuetz and then Ms. Corby also, if you'd like to chime in.
Yeah, I believe the councilman Volkey, Volkey is making a point of order and there's not to be any debate on that and the point of order is decided by the chair.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, madam Legislative Council. I will say, Mr. Volkey, because I was aware this issue was going to, was very likely to occur based on the conversations in the, in the public space. I worked with Legislative Council and our administrative officer to come up with the best plan to address this and the plan that we determined would be the most fair would be to allow speakers to talk about masks generally, but not about mandates that are on the printed agenda. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just, I think this is sort of a follow-up point of order, but signups for public testimony, including the invitation to audience, close at, I believe, 11:00 AM. And the printed agenda, including the bills to be introduced, is not published on the website until, I believe, 4:30 PM. So folks signing up this morning to testify would have no knowledge about what bills are going to be introduced and they're not provided to the public in advance. So these folks have all been sitting here waiting to testify and now being told they can't provide their testimony. I just, in the spirit of transparency, it seems to me like if they didn't have prior notice that something was on the agenda, they ought to be allowed to, to testify. And I'm just not sure how, I mean, you said you spoke, you know, with Legislative Council and Office of Law to try and figure out something that's fair, but I can't, they've had no notice about this.
So the idea is that any topic or any issue of mask mandates will be, you know, on the agenda at future hearings. So we would ask folks that want to address those topics to come back when they are on, when they are on the schedule for hearing and vote. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I, I just want to add to the conversation. I think that handling invitation to audience entirely different than it has ever been handled by this council and any council I can ever remember watching has created such confusion among folks who signed up tonight, among folks who are probably listening at home, and I, I, I don't think that we should be moving forward in this fashion at all.
Thank you for your thoughts. Again, I feel like we're in uncharted territory in terms of a topic that was so clearly out in the public conversation that also was on the printed agenda. So I'm going to do our best to proceed, allow folks to speak their minds, but also be in accordance with the council rules. At this time, Mr. Volkey, you've had several opportunities to speak. Can you please wait until we're finished with the invitation to audience?
I, I don't think I have a choice because you get to choose whether to recognize me or not. So.
I'm asking you, can you wait until we're finished with invitation to audience? Or is this going to be, you know, something we've already talked about?
No, this is not something we've already talked about.
Then go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting. In light of the concern that I have about access to this meeting, the fact that we've had numerous delays and now this issue where we are shutting down debate and the ability of people to speak in a way this council's never done it, I think that the way this meeting is proceeding is not appropriate and I don't think it serves the best interests of this county and the citizens. So for that reason, I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Hare, second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Robden.
Nay.
I believe that's four in the affirmative, I'm sorry, three in the affirmative, four in the negative. The early motion to adjourn has failed. If I heard everyone correctly, I'm sorry, there was a little bit of breaking up there.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will continue with invitation to audience. I believe Ms. Gold is not here, so we will go on to Ms. Joyce Toll. And I apologize if I've said your name incorrectly. Please let me know how to pronounce it correctly, Ms. Joyce. And possibly Joyce is not here either. Going on to Bill Love, and I see that Mr. Love is present.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Love. I live at four ninety Pharaoh Drive in Severna Park. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak today. Mask mandates are ineffective and are potentially harmful. It's a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading. The overall evidence is clear. Standard cloth and surgical mask offer next to no protection against virus-sized particles versus small aerosols. Wearing a mask to prevent catching SARS-CoV-2 or similarly sized influenza is like throwing sand at a chain-linked fence. It doesn't work. The fact is, after reviewing all the studies worldwide, the CDC found no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks. There are proven microbial challenges as well as breathing difficulties that are created and exacerbated by extended mask-wearing. Requiring anyone to wear a mask sets the stage for contracting any infection, including COVID- nineteen, and making the consequences of that infection much graver. In essence, a mask may very well put us at an increased risk of infection and, if so, having a far worse outcome. Furthermore, by requiring everyone to wear a mask, you are promoting the idea that a mask can prevent or treat a disease, which is an illegal deceptive practice. Therefore, council, if the time comes to vote when extending or implementing mask mandates, please vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Love. The next speaker we have on our list, I believe, is Kesha Petty. Ms. Petty, are, there you are. Ms. Petty, you have the floor.
Ms. Petty, you do need to accept prompts, unmute yourself, and unmute yourself.
Oh. It appears that Ms. Petty is logged on in two different places or logged on twice?
Yeah, actually, yes, she is Madam Chair, so let's try the, the other profile here.
Hopefully, the real Ms. Petty.
Ms. Petty, you're unmuted, can you talk? You're unmuted, I can see that, try talking.
Oh, now she's muted again.
So I'm guessing that, oh, Ms. Petty, are you there?
Go ahead and speak if you're there.
So I'm guessing that perhaps there's a two-device issue here, maybe joining on two devices that are not linked together. So Ms. Petty, what I'm going to suggest is that you leave the meeting and rejoin the meeting, either on one device or link your two devices together. Madam Chair, I'm going to suggest that we circle back to Ms. Petty.
All right, thank you, Ms. Petty. We will try to come back to you, or we will come back to you momentarily, and hopefully we will resolve whatever issue is that we can't hear you. Going forward for now, for, to Ms. Kristy Basista.
Yes, Kristy Basista, five six one six Harbor Valley Drive, Brooklyn, Maryland. Can you hear me?
Yes, you may continue.
Okay, I want to address the number-one comeback used when citizens and parents want to address and all the overreaching and unnecessary mandates placed on us and our children. That is that the hospitals are being overrun. In the summer of twenty nineteen, it was already a crisis in the lack of nurses. Baby boomers were retiring, and the next generation didn't have enough to fill the gap. The vacancy rate rose from seven percent in twenty-ten to twelve percent in twenty-nineteen. On thirty-one December twenty-twenty-one, just a few days ago, Maryland Hospital Association President Bob Atlas stated that the problem wasn't the number of open beds, but the number of workers to staff them. What are the figures showing how many healthcare workers were fired or quit because of the vaccine mandates? This so-called crisis is being created by all of these aggressive and illegal mandates. We know there are treatments available to keep people out of the hospital, yet people are being discouraged from using them, and doctors are threatened when they want to talk about them because of the push for the fear-driven vaccines. Those treatments and protocols that can be used early to alleviate the burden on hospitals are inexpensive. Instead, there's this push to take an experimental vaccine that doesn't keep people from getting or spreading COVID and are lining the pockets of corrupt people. We keep hearing the unvaccinated are the majority in the hospitals, but those figures are not posted anywhere. I want to leave you with this. The thief comes only to steal, kill, and destroy. Psalms ninety-one states that you will not be afraid of the terror of the night or the arrow that flies by day or the pestilence that stalks in the darkness. A thousand may fall at your side, then ten thousand at your right hand, but it shall not come to you. Because the Lord is our refuge, and no evil will befall you, or any plague come into your dwelling. I pray that the Lord God Almighty opens your eyes so that you may turn from darkness to light or from the power of Satan to God, that you may receive forgiveness of sins and an inheritance among those sanctified by faith in God. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Basista. Next, we have Ms. Peggy Williams. Ms. Williams, we will unmute you, and you may go ahead and speak.
I think that Ms. Williams is on a phone, so I'm going to suggest star six, Ms. Williams, to unmute yourself.
It looks like you're unmuted. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, you're unmuted. Do you want to give us a sound check?
Can you hear me? Yes, you may proceed. You can hear me now? Yes. Okay. One oh-three Wiltshire Lane, Severna Park, Maryland. If you've ever seen a virologist working with infectious agents in a level-four bio safety lab, wearing airtight suits and with air supply lines, you would recognize that simply wearing a mask is not appropriate for avoiding viruses. Clearly, masks don't stop viruses. Our own data from the Department of Health shows that counties have similar case rates whether we widely wear masks or not. There are over one hundred and fifty comparative studies demonstrating that masks are ineffective and actually harmful to the wearer. If the decision to extend wearing of masks is being contemplated, what, what's the emergency? Are the rising hospitalization rates because of people with COVID or people hospitalized because of COVID? We've seen this game before. The people have stopped trusting the statistics Dr. K is presenting. Aside from being harmfully physically, harmful physically, masks are dehumanizing, isolating, and an outward symbol of oppression. If you ever wondered what tyranny looks like, this is it. How many times have you seen the tyrants who enforce masking get caught maskless at parties and enjoying maskless, maskless freedom in free states? Obviously, they have no fear of COVID, but find it necessary to continue to push fear on our communities and children. And for what? This was purely a power grab. It was never about public health, it had everything to do with control. As someone once said, "The welfare of humanity has always been the excuse of tyrants." I oppose the continued countywide masking. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, we have Ms. Clemson Patrick.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, you may proceed.
Lovely, thank you all for your attention. I actually don't have any comments on the masks, so a relief to you all. I'm actually coming to you this evening with a more of a personal matter. I live at four five two one Three Sisters Drive in Pasadena. I speak on the majority of those landowners that live on the streets. We are a gateway to the Magathie-Greenway National, I'm sorry, Natural Areas, and we unfortunately have been seeing an uprising of motorcycles, I'm sorry, dirt bikes and four-wheelers driving down our road. As you can imagine, this is very noisy for us, and most of us live on two-plus acres, so it's quite an inconvenience to us. However, if you look at the regulations to utilize the natural area, it is a county natural conservation area for you all, and these dirt bikes and four-wheelers are tearing up the trails, the walking trails and the equestrian trails of that park. My concern is also your roadways. I was actually on a mountain road two days ago, and I saw a four-wheeler and a dirt bike driving down mountain roads to Lake Shore Drive to Three Sisters Drive. So you have dirt bikes and four-wheelers driving on county roadways. In addition, if they're not being, driving on the county roadways without license, and some of them without helmets, they're actually trailering them in and parking them at, at Lake Shore Elementary School and tearing across your, your educational grounds in order to come back onto our road and into your trails. So there are three areas of concern here. I think that the council would be appreciative to be aware of, and then obviously my noise issue. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Clemson Patrick. Mr. Pruski.
Madam Chair, just for the benefit of the constituent, I don't represent them, but we all represent in our own county. We did pass a bill that I wrote and was passed regarding motorbikes. Again, if she wanted to reach out to my office, I'm happy to pass that on to her, but I would recommend also to call the police. There is legislation forward where somebody can get cited for illegally riding dirt bikes and motor vehicles. So I just want at least for her benefit that she has that information. Thank you.
All right, next up on our list is David Morseburger. And I see Mr. Morseburger here. You may unmute yourself and proceed.
Good evening. I'm Dave Morseburger from Davidsonville, Maryland. I have, I am disappointed in the way this is progressing, given that we have not seen what I'll quote as the printed agenda. Like others have said, people have prepared for this for days to talk about masks and mask mandates, and now I once are told, wait till another time, wait for two weeks or whenever. But what I really wanted to talk about is I'm worried about the council and county executive becoming too partisan. I've been monitoring the county council for years, and I've never seen partisanship like this. I expect hyper-partnership from the federal level, but I never expected this from the county level. I mean, examples included that a few months, weeks ago, month ago, you had a public, you extended the outdoor dining. And what did the county executive do? He had a public signing at a restaurant once the bill was served, and he livestreamed that on Facebook. Such a partisan activity. Just tonight, the partisan vote to adjourn the meeting because people here, like I said, weren't prepared to talk and now told, well, that it's, there's a printed agenda that nobody on here has seen. Then we have this extension of, I mean, this emergency mask mandate by the county executive, not a bill within the, within the council. I mean, this seven-day emergency order that expires on January seventh. I believe that's politically calculated. I mean, don't be confused, this is political posturing for the twenty-twenty-two election. I mean, there's no, there's no bill tonight to discuss, and the next session is scheduled for the seventeenth, when the current emergency order expires on the seventh. You know, so sad that this is so partisan. If, I mean, that's it, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morseburger. Next up, we have Mr. Seth Lipco. And is Mr. Lipco there? He is. You may proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, my address is one one two one Nottingham Drive, Glenverney. Like most people, I've had to kind of tailor what I've planned on saying due to what's been going on. I will try to adhere to these pop-up rules, but forgive me if I don't. I want to start talking about the, the new COVID variant, Omicron. Just want to let you all know, there's no science to suggest that it's very life-threatening, any more than other winter colds. I also wanted to address hospital overcrowding. That is also a common issue in the wintertime due to flu season, other seasonal factors. So COVID hasn't necessarily created this phenomenon, but I'm sure it does contribute to it. I do think that there are other ways that we can try to mitigate this, namely calming people down. It seems like the exact opposite's been happening through news and other, other media outlets throughout the whole pandemic. And I've even seen recently that ERs have been overcrowded in, in other states by asymptomatic people because they're, they're freaking out. And I think we should maybe try to address calming the public down and, and dealing with, with some problems in, in other ways than are currently in place. In terms of the spike of COVID, with vaccinations on the rise and also with, with herd immunity, we should be able to predict how long these surges should last and then try to account for those, those things. We should look at other countries that have seen these variants before we are seeing them to see how, how long it takes for, for them to recover. And then also on, on the subject of masking and how effective it is, while it does have some degree of help, it doesn't really stop or prevent any transmission of COVID, only the properly fitted and ninety-fives and more greater protections, as mentioned by others earlier, can really prevent transmission. So maybe if we really wanted to be serious about this, we'd not just have some generic mandates going on here. I will say, most people with or without any oversight from the government would choose of their own free will to wear masks. I've witnessed this over the past several months when we haven't had any mandates in place. And I don't think the citizens of this county need to be micromanaged in this regard by our government. They do not have the power to prescribe healthcare treatments to us or mandate any health treatments upon its citizens.
That's time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Lipco. Next up, we have Tamara Beeger.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you may proceed.
Good evening, county council members. My name is Tamara Beeger. My address is six zero seven Ryden Street in Odenton, Maryland. I am here today to ask the council to please help protect our communities and especially our schools during the current COVID surge. As a mom of four students in Anorono County Public Schools, I want schools to remain open so that my children can continue learning in person. And as a substitute teacher for our school district, I can assure you that there is a huge shortage of substitute teachers and that we are in constant demand. So as a county, we need to protect our school staff so that they can do their jobs as there are not nearly enough substitute teachers to cover all of the absences. And the COVID pandemic has worsened this issue. The fight to keep our children and school staff members safe and to keep schools open starts in our communities because healthier communities equal healthier schools. Vaccinations and mask-wearing are the best prevention against the spread of COVID. Wearing a mask in public is the minimum our county residents can do for our schools. So I ask that the county council put politics aside, help support these goals in the wake of the latest COVID surge and vote to extend the mask policy for all indoor public places. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beeger. Next up, we have Jonathan Hellman. Is Mr. Hellman in the meeting? I don't seem, okay. I don't see Mr. Hellman, so we will go on to our next speaker, Kurt Svenson. You may unmute yourself and proceed.
Hi, this is Kurt Svenson, Arnold, Maryland, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, cool. Not here to talk about masks, although it does, this whole conversation is bringing out what I am here to speak about, which is partisanship is not representation. This is more a message to my fellow citizens than it is to you all because the national political. because the national political divide has clearly arrived here at the local level in Anorono County Government. It seems that the citizen perspective in all of this is being lost. This will be highlighted in my testimony later tonight on bills 111 and 112. For now, I think the lyrics "Stuck in the Middle With You" puts it best. A local take on this song might go like this. Well, I don't know why I came here tonight. I've got the feeling that something ain't right. Four Democrats to the left of me, three Republicans to the right. Here I am, stuck in the middle with you. Aside from coming to meetings like this to implore you all to rise above political polarization, I think it's important to know there is a way to get out of this. It's called proportional representation. Best implemented in Anorono County Council Elections as ranked choice voting in a countywide multi-member district. This whole district drawing thing by definition is divisive and unnecessary in our little space within the small state of Maryland. We are all Anorono County citizens. Whether you're an independent-minded citizen that prefers to be unaffiliated with a political party here, here, any one of the ethnic racial minority groups representing over one-third of the county population or someone that cares deeply about a particular and timely issue confronting the county at large, I urge you to seriously consider proportional representation as an election reform in the upcoming charter revision deliberations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Svenson. All right, um, next up, we have Virginia Hage, or I'm not 100% sure how to pronounce your name, but if Virginia, you are here, you are next. No, Ms. Corby is shaking her head, so we don't appear to have Ms., um, Ms. Virginia. Um, going on, we have Tina Belford. We have Ms. Belford. No sign of Ms. Belford. All right, then we have one, um, late addition.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Ms. Belford is here. I'm not certain what's, what's going on. Give me just one moment, please.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm getting an error message from Ms. Belford. It says that I cannot allow her to talk because Ms. Belford is using an older version of Zoom.
Oh.
It's allowing me the option to promote Ms. Belford to panelist, which would, um, bring her up in front of you all. We can certainly try that if you would like. We made the decision to, uh, not do video for a number of different reasons, but, um, I can do that if you'd like me to.
Yeah, let's give that a try. And if not, maybe we can, um, give Ms., uh, sorry. Uh, oh no, there she is. Ms. Belford, if you're able to unmute yourself, um, go ahead and you may speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
You may proceed. Okay, I'm sorry, there isn't an echo, is there? I, I just logged in on another device.
You're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm Tina Belford, Barchall Avenue in Lythaca, Maryland. I'd ask that you consider these following, uh, statements when making decisions on behalf of all your constituents. The CDC has just admitted that they are making COVID decisions based on what they think people will tolerate. Most people cannot and will not tolerate much more of COVID mandates that have been ruling our lives for almost two years. At this point, mandates are nothing more than a reason for field of, for reason to, for people to feel divided and angry. We now have enough evidence that shows masks and vaccines are basically useless in stopping COVID. The vaccines that are available to the public are still only those under EUA since community is not available in the United States. While on the subject of the injections being dispensed, they do not provide immunity from COVID. They cause more harm than good, especially in the pediatric population and healthy young adults. Please stop supporting unconst- unconstitutional vaccine mandates. Children are not COVID vectors and should not be treated as such. This mentality is destroying an entire generation and it's happening on your watch because of the decisions you're making. Please commit to keeping our school buildings open. The number of positive cases is an inflated number because of the 500,000 free test kits that were provided to 500,000 curious people during cold and flu season. These tests are known to be unreliable and provide false positive results. Can you prove to us that the coronavirus showing positive in these tests is any different than the common cold, which are also coronaviruses? If you do have proof, please send it to me because I'd love to see it. Please stop wasting our taxpayer money on te- test kits for healthy people. Can we focus on meaningful numbers like hospitalizations and deaths? The CDC has finally recommended this brand-new idea, and I thought we were following their guidance. While I'm on the topic of what the experts are saying, did you know that even Tony Fauci is admitting that people are in the hospital with COVID rather than because of COVID? Please stop with the fear tactics regarding the overwhelm of our hospitals. They have plenty of beds, just no staff because of the vaccine mandates you've supported. And finally, masks do not prevent spread of airborne viruses unless they are properly fit-tested N95 respirators. Please stop giving people a false sense of security by promoting the idea that a cloth mask or even a surgical mask is preventing the spread of an airborne virus. I've emailed you a document referencing the new CDC guidance for healthcare workers, and you'll note that it states that we are able to work with a positive test while wearing an N95. Why would they specify N95 if the latter are much cheaper?
Time has expired. Um, thank you so much for your comments tonight. Um, I understand that we do not have Mr. Head, so if, I would like to just circle back one more time um, to see if any of the other folks, do we have anyone else on the call, Ms. Corby?
Uh, we, we are looking for Linda Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think I see her, Gina, which.
Yes, yes.
I do not see, um, give me just one moment here.
Haley Mark.
Haley Mark or Mark Haley? I don't see that name here, too.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not certain if some people were flipping names around or not.
Okay.
I do see we have Ms., we have Ms., um, we had Ms. Petty. There she is. Do you want, would you like to give Ms. Petty a chance?
Yes, let's go ahead and see if we can, um, with Ms. Petty, if you're muted, you may proceed. Thank you.
All right, great. Um, yes, hi, I'm Kecia Petty. I live at 1004 Jackson Street in Annapolis. And I am very concerned about the medical, um, and the mental impacts of wearing most of our face covered, whether it be for a moment or part of the day, or in the case of kids or workers, you know, half their day. They are, um, in my opinion, like I said, unhealthy mentally. They hide your face. They hide your expression. If I could see you, I have all these reports in front of me that say you know, masks don't work and the social, um, you know, screw-ups that would happen, the impact of, you know, emotion, age. Um, you can't identify whether you're friend or foe, so you're in this constant fear of what is going to happen. They are a fear device. They're also a snot pocket. Um, but, uh, I just feel like the definition also of sanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. We have seen time and time again that these masks don't help. Whether it's through our county or a different state, all in comparison, these masks are virtue signaling at the very most, I think. And we are afraid right now of the common cold. We need to go back to a sense of reality and our county needs to embrace the reality and show others that we can get through this. The ones that are still more afraid, who've gotten into the, uh, cult of Corona, I almost feel like that they can still do what they want. They can still wear the masks. They need to, um, let us all take responsibility for our own body, our own actions. And, um, I, I just, I cry that I can't see people now and they're just, they're this, this head, um, coming at us. It's really sad and scary and it's a very slippery slope. We start mandating, you know, these masks now. Will it be the vaccines? Will we be like Austria who's separating their people, locking down um, half their town because they're unvaccinated or unmasked? I mean, what will it be next? You know, will it be your religion? Will it be what part of town you live in? It, it's such a slippery slope and these masks have been proven to be ineffective time and time again. They're nothing but for show. I please, uh, ask that you do not push this any further. And the seventh is my birthday. That would be a really good present. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Petty, and happy early birthday.
Thanks.
It appears that we don't have any other of the speakers, um, on the call or on our Zoom. Ms. Corby, is that correct? And? Ms. Schultz?
I've just done a quick, quick cross-check. It looks like we have a few individuals who are not here.
All right. Well, then, at this time, um, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? Uh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I, I had a discussion earlier with Madam Chair about this, but I would like to make a motion to consolidate the public hearing and discussion on Bill 11121 and Bill 11221, and then vote on each in order at the appropriate time on the agenda.
I will second that motion. Uh, Ms. Corby, please call the roll.
Uh, Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hair.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to, uh, consolidate the discussion and hearings on bills 11121 and 11221 have been passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and I appreciate the, um, attempt to find any efficiencies for tonight's meeting. Um, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? So moved, Allison Pickard.
Second, Lacy.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 20th, 2021.
The meeting was called to order by Chair Lacy at 7:00 PM. Excuse me, the meeting was called to order by Chair Radvian at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by, given by Ms. Fiedler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers near Rendell Center, Annapolis, Maryland.
Um, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2021? Motion, Allison Pickard.
Second, Lacy.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Those opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of December 20th, 2021 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 122, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations. Bill number 222, An Ordnance Concerning Capital Budget and Program Cox Creek Dredging II and Franklin Manor Dredging Capital Projects Fund Transfer. Bill number 322, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure, Resilience Authority Director, Positions in the Classified Service. Bill number 422, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation and Budget, Capital Budget and Capital Program. Bill number 522, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Amusements, Licensing of Coin-Operated Amusement Devices. Bill number 622, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning COVID-19 and the Use of Face Coverings. Bill number 722, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Extension of Proclamation of Civil Emergency.
Um, thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 122, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorono County to Require the Establishment of a System of Public Campaign Financing for Candidates for County Executive and County Council. Resolution number 222, Resolution Approving a Nomination for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 7. Resolution number 322, Resolution Approving the Nomination for Reappointment of a Member to the Anorono County Human Relations Commission.
Um, thank you, Ms. Secretary. We will hear resolutions number 2-22 and 3-22 at the end of this, um, at the end of our agenda. Um, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 99-21 as amended.
Sorry about that, couldn't get the file open. Bill number 9921, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development Exemptions.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the appropriate time, we, we've discussed this bill many times. It's been in work session, so I'm not going to rehash it for the sake of time. But at the appropriate time, I will be offering an amendment.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Baron, would you like to respond on behalf of the administration?
Uh, good evening, uh, in, in the interest of time as well, happy to, uh, hold comments until we get to the amendments.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for my colleagues on the council at this time? All right, seeing no hands, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number 99-21 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions online.
And we do have one individual signed up to speak at this time. Um, do we have Mr. Baca here or Baca? No, he is not here.
I have not seen, uh, Mr. Baca's presence in our virtual waiting room.
All right, thank you very much. Um, then, at this time, the public hearing on Bill number 99-21 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 99-21 as amended.
Bill number 9921, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development Exemptions.
All right, I understand that there are three amendments. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number three.
Amendment number three, this amendment removes the term non-residential from the proposed exemption for improvements to existing structures located outside the critical area or bog protection area.
Um, Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You're welcome to make a statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. So just to clarify a little bit, the intention of this bill is to take small additions, uh, being less than a thousand square feet and exempt them from the site development plan. They would still need to get a grading permit. There are still a number of hoops that they need to jump through. There just aren't quite as many hoops. This was originally written with the idea that it was going to benefit small businesses, particularly one small business in my district that had reached out to me and wanted to do a very small addition, but the cost of the site development plan made it impossible for them to do it. So the idea here is that we will capture not just businesses, but also residential uh, additions that are less than a thousand square feet. So that's the intention with this amendment is to open that up a little bit more. Hopefully it'll decrease some of the workload for planning and zoning, given the size of these amendments, these additions, excuse me, and how small they are. Um, my hope is that this will streamline the process for homeowners in the county as well as businesses, so I would ask for your support.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey, so moved.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Um, is there any discussion? And actually, Mr. Baron, if the administration has anything to say on this amendment, you may go ahead.
Sure, um, I want to thank the sponsor. We've had a bunch of back and forth on all of this. We're comfortable with this amendment.
Um, any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number three.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hair.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number four.
Amendment number four, this amendment provides that certain grading permits for single residential lot development are not subject to the provisions of Article 17, Title IV.
Uh, Mr. Volkey, again, this is your amendment. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, this is one that I've had the opportunity to work with the administration on, but the intention here is to ensure um, that grading permits are not being required, uh, for some of these extremely small residential lot developments that are happening. So the idea is, excuse me, not grading permits, um, site development plans, but, um, that's the idea here. So happy to take any questions.
All right, is there a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Second.
All right, um, Mr. Baron, do you have any, um, comments on behalf of the administration?
Uh, nothing further to add, um, as Mr. Volkey. Uh nothing further to add. Um as Mr. Volkey stated, we've worked together on this. Appreciate it. We're good.
All right, thank you. Is there any additional discussion or questions from my colleagues? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number four.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number four is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment number five.
Amendment number five, this amendment clarifies that the Office of Planning and Zoning will issue an administrative decision after considering any comments from reviewing agencies.
Um again, Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, had the opportunity to work with the administration on this one. We actually spent a lot of time going back and forth on this particular amendment. As some of my colleagues may recall at the work session, we discussed whether to use the term modification or to go through this administrative decision process. Um appreciate the administration looking into the idea of the administrative decision, and I think ultimately, I don't want to steal their thunder, but I think they're comfortable with this, at least I hope. Um so with that being said, I would ask my colleagues to move this. This will allow planning and zoning um to make a decision on some of these exemptions from the site development plan without some of the other unintended consequences of calling it a modification that may be tied into it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Volkey. Um Mr. Baron, do you have any comments from the administration?
Um thank you, Madam Chair. Uh yeah, I I think, uh Mr. Volkey, you didn't spoil anything. Uh we worked pretty hard to to come to this. If if the council will recall, we discussed a different approach uh that the administration uh preferred and and after a lot of back and forth with the sponsor, um with some of the experts on on this Zoom. Uh we were able to to get to yes on this language. Um but I do want to flag uh that there still needs to be a process that folks are put through so that um OPZ can do the work to make sure that um the conditions are met to to go through this streamlined um approach, and and we think uh we can work with this, so we support this amendment.
Um thank you, Mr. Baron, and I realize we actually need a motion to adopt this amendment. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Amendment number five, Allison Pickard.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Second, thank you, Mr. Volkey. Um is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number five.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler. Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number five is adopted.
Bill number ninety-nine dash twenty-one as amended will be heard on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number one oh two dash twenty-one.
Bill number one oh two twenty-one, an ordinance concerning zoning requirements for conditional uses, adult independent dwelling units setbacks.
Uh Mr. Volkey, again, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. So uh again, we've talked about this bill at work sessions and previous council meetings. Um I appreciate my colleagues holding this at the last meeting so that we had the opportunity to work on the amendment that you will see in a few moments. Um would ask that you support that amendment, and at that point, it will adjust, uh well, excuse me, clarify, not really adjust, but clarify how planning and zoning should look at boundary lines when it comes to adult independent dwelling units with respect to setbacks.
Thank you. Um Mr. Baron, is there any comment from the administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh so uh I do have joining me, and I realize I collected to do this on the previous bill, but we've got most of the same team here. Uh we have our Deputy C A O for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. Our OPZ Director is Stephen Kai-Ziegler and Ms. Miller from OPZ and from law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. Um we we've worked on this bill with the sponsor. We're comfortable with with the proposed language. Um the the current code language does leave some ambiguity regarding uh if setback requirements apply only to structures or parking as well. This bill clarifies that ambiguity and puts in place uh the the right requirements for each. Um and we'll discuss the amendment at the appropriate time. Um if anybody from from the team wants to jump in, feel free.
All right, thank you. Um are there any questions from the council? Hearing none. Um as a reminder for the public, the public hearing on Bill number one oh two dash twenty-one was held and closed on December twentieth. There is one amendment. Um Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment requires certain structures to be located at least fifty feet from the boundary line of the development site.
Um Mr. Volkey, again, your amendment. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I I sort of teed this up, but the clarification here is the idea that instead of using the term all lot lines, because sometimes these A I D U developments can actually have internal lot lines as opposed to external lot lines. This is clarifying that the boundary line is going to be the outer um boundary line of the development site. And then it also clarifies that the setbacks do not apply except for the structures that are listed or the stormwater management facilities. So we wanted to make sure that we clarified on that second part of the amendment, what's listed is on page two, that it was um still there was going to be setback requirements for stormwater management facilities and structures. Um so with that, I would ask my colleagues' support. I think this clarifies this bill even more to get it to a place where it is ready for passage, hopefully, at the next meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Volkey. Um is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Second.
All right, um is there any um comment from the administration, Mr. Baron?
Uh we're comfortable with this amendment.
All right, any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Um in that case, um Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment number one?
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Um thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill number one oh two dash twenty-one as amended will be heard on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Madam Secretary, now we're finally rolling along. Um please read the title of Bill number one oh three dash twenty-one as amended.
Bill number one oh three twenty-one, an ordinance concerning zoning, commercial districts, town center districts, gunsmiths and ammunition sales facilities.
Um Ms. Fiedler and Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. Um whichever of you would like to speak on it has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take the floor if I could. Um so this bill, the impetus for this bill really came out of Bill eighty-two twenty um that we passed last year. And a gentleman reached out shortly after that bill um passed. And he was interested in bringing a a state-of-the-art facility and really being a partner with uh local law enforcement at the state federal um level, and his idea is to have an indoor range that has training components that could, in the future, should he be able to locate his business, offer uh training purposes indoor for all law enforcement, um also the general public. But our current code doesn't have um kind of an equal uh ground in C three and C four to fulfill uh the business plan that this gentleman has. Um so I looked at the code, and I know that we have the ability, or anyone who wants to open an indoor range has the ability, if they go through the special exception process in C three and C four, meet the requirements and are approved, they can locate um in C three and C four. This bill does not change that. What this bill says is that you can uh have as permitted use um the the sale of ammunition and a gunsmithing um employee or operation. In the last meeting, we did amend the bill so that these uses could not happen in a town center environment um or a town center development. I did hear from uh residents after the passage of that amendment and um was answering some questions on the bill. So I want to be clear about what the bill does not do. The bill does not change where indoor ranges can locate, as I uh just stated. The bill does not change where firearms can be sold. Firearms currently can be sold in C three and C four so long as a retailer gets the um necessary federal licensing as required. Um the bill does have the addition of a gunsmith in C three. I think it's important that people understand how a gunsmith is part of the larger conversation on firearm safety. A gunsmith is someone who can inspect a gun or a firearm. Um look at all of the components, the safety components. If there is a client in a range who brings in a firearm that is being used regularly in a range and would like a gunsmith to take a look at the safety components, that is something that is under the purview of a gunsmith. That's one of the roles. Um so it is important that we understand that gunsmithing is part of firearm safety. Um so this bill really, in the the larger discussion, was related to what we allow in an indoor range um that also has the ability to have a gunsmith and ammunition sales. Um because of that concern from the community and really having a tie to the indoor range as the impetus for this bill, I do have an amendment that I will offer at the appropriate time and ask for the council's consideration. Thank you.
Um all right, um Mr. Baron, is there any response from the administration?
Thank you, uh Madam Chair. Uh sticking with me uh is Ms. Rhodes, Mr. Kai-Ziegler, Ms. Miller and Ms. Kenny. Um so we we discussed this bill, I think, now twice, um sort of echoing the administration's comments from from those meetings. Uh the the OPZ team has reviewed the reviewed the bill from from a a planning point of view, and I'll I'll hold off on commenting until on the amendment until the appropriate time, but from a a planner's point of view, uh the bill is is fine. We believe it's a policy question for this council if you want to expand the areas where this type of activity is available. Um we do have some concerns around uh the the data that shows that additional access um to ammunition sales to gun stores um does increase violence. So it really becomes a question about what are the appropriate zones uh for this type of activity.
All right, thank you very much. Do I have any questions, additional questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, um we will now open the public hearing on Bill number one oh three dash twenty-one as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did receive one submission to the online testimony tool that went to the entire council. It's included in the summary that is posted online, and it has been added to the record.
Thank you. Um I see we have two individuals signed up to speak at this time. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Um when it is your turn to speak, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Um do we have Mr. William Quick?
Uh Madam Chair, we have a gentleman here who's got the same last name, but in looking at the registrations, it appears to be two separate people. Uh but I do not see Mr. William Quick uh or Mr. Oscar Baca in our meeting.
Shall we talk to the address the other person with that same surname?
Uh we they have the same last name, but they've registered with two very different addresses. We are certainly certainly check in with Mr. Quick if you'd like.
Let's check in with him. You know, if we had, if we were in person, we would be calling additional folks up um after, you know, calling the named folks on the list. So I I do see Mr. Tom Quick.
Yes.
Mr. Tom Quick, you have two minutes. You have the floor.
Um I actually didn't want to speak on this one. Uh that is my son who signed up also. Uh he mistakenly signed up for the wrong one.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation. Um in that, oh. All right, in that case, um the public hearing on Bill number one oh three dash twenty-one as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number one oh three dash twenty-one as amended.
Bill number one oh three twenty-one, an ordinance concerning zoning, commercial districts, town center districts, gunsmiths and ammunition sales facilities.
Thank you. Um Madam Secretary, please read, um oh, sorry, there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number two.
Ms. Schultz, could you go to the second page, please?
Oops.
Uh oh, okay, it's okay. I can pull it up in another. Here we go. Uh this amendment removes changes made by amendment to prohibit gunsmiths and ammunition sales facilities in town center districts, allows gunsmiths and ammunition sales facilities as a conditional use in C three commercial districts, and adds the conditional use requirement that gunsmiths and ammunition sales facilities be affiliated with a rifle, pistol, skeet or archery range.
Um. Thank you. Uh Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So this amendment really came out of um hearing back from the community and wanting to still be able to address the issue that the constituent is having. Um and because the the impetus of the bill is tied to indoor ranges and what they can do and cannot do in C three versus C four. So this amendment um removes town centers because the use is changing to a conditional use, not permitted as it was introduced as. Um and conditional uses are not permitted uses in town centers. So town centers are off the table. Um this ties the bill and the use of ammunition sales and gunsmithing to an indoor approved indoor um range, and those indoor ranges do have to go through the special exception process in C three and C four. And I just want to clarify because um this this amendment nor the bill as a whole increases access to firearms. You can still have an indoor range in C three. You can still purchase a firearm in C three. This bill does not change either one of those. Um but I ask for the support of the amendment this evening, and thank you very much.
Uh thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Either second.
Um is there any discussion from my colleagues? Um or Mr. Baron, would the administration like to respond?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes, go uh go ahead, Ms. Pickard.
I don't have my flag. Um I just wanted to thank uh the sponsor today for taking time to talk me through um the amendment this afternoon. It was very helpful. Thank you.
Uh Mr. Baron.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll I'll echo um uh Councilwoman Pickard's comment. The sponsor did talk me through this amendment uh a few days back. Uh have no objection to the amendment.
All right, um any additional discussion? Um in that case, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number two.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number two is adopted.
Um thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill number one oh three dash twenty-one as amended will be heard on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Moving on to Bill number one oh four dash twenty-one, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number one oh four dash twenty-one.
Bill number one oh four twenty-one, an ordinance concerning zoning, school bus facilities.
Uh Ms. Fiedler, once again, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I won't go into the nuts and bolts of the bill. We had a discussion on this at the last meeting in our work session. I do have an amendment coming at the appropriate time that I believe will address the concerns of my colleagues.
All right, thank you very much. Um Mr. Baron, on behalf of the administration.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Uh same uh team sticking with me for this one. Um I'll I'll follow the sponsor's lead. We've we've discussed this. I think uh the administration articulated a number of concerns uh at the last meeting, particularly from Ms. Miller's comments. Um so we'll we'll So we'll leave it at the previous discussion and make comments on the amendment at the appropriate time.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from my council colleagues at this time? Seeing none, just as a reminder to the public, the hearing for this bill, number 104-21, was held and closed on December 20th. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment removes school bus facilities as a conditional use in C one and C two commercial districts and removes school bus facilities as a permitted use in W one industrial districts.
All right, sorry, I'm trying to read the amendment myself. Ms. Fiedler, would you like to make a statement about your amendment?
Yes, thank you, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So this amendment came out of the discussion from our last meeting. This bill has been a very tricky one. We have school bus facilities as a use for as far back as we have been transporting children to school in the county. So it's a little surprising when you look at our code that we don't have them in our use chart anywhere. There is a small mention of school bus facilities in residential districts from a bill that was passed in 2001. But other than that, nothing. I tried to get them in where I thought was appropriate, but I understand the concerns over the consistency with the GDP and the industrial use in the lower commercial and industrial zones. So I believe by removing those as permitted uses in the bill, that addresses the concerns that were discussed at the last meeting. And I hope I can get your support on the amendment this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Sorry, Mr. Baron, did you have any comments that you wanted to add? Sorry.
No worries. Just briefly, and Ms. Miller, feel free to jump in if you want to add. The administration does not, well, we don't oppose the amendment. It doesn't fully address all the concerns that we've articulated on the bill.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler. Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill number 104-21 as amended will be heard on January 18th, 2022. All right, bill number 105-21. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 105-21.
Bill number 105-21, an ordinance concerning personnel, employee relations, rights of classified employees, limitation on number of appropriate representation units.
All right, this is an admin bill. Mr. Baron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Joining me is our personal director, Ms. Podolsky, and from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klasmyer. This bill, as we previously discussed at the last work session, changes the cap for the number of bargaining units for the county to 12. Current code is a little confusing. It's currently the lesser of 13 or the number of bargaining units that result of the consolidation of units. So technically, that's 11. What this bill does is increase the number to 12. That changes in light of a request from some of our police communication operators looking to form a bargaining unit. The administration wants to support that effort and hope the council will as well. Ms. Podolsky and Ms. Blair-Klasmyer are here to go over any tough questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. I'm curious if we can get answers to questions from Ms. Blair-Klasmyer's cat, who is like my favorite cameo appearance of our council meetings. Anyway, are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 105-21. Pardon me, Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony.
All right, I see we have one individual signed up, but there may have been, that may have been in error?
I think, I think it was, yes. The gentleman who registered for every sort of public hearing this evening. Possibly there was some confusion, but he's not here, I'm afraid.
Okay. In that case, the public hearing on bill number 105-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 105-21.
Bill number 105-21, an ordinance concerning personnel, employee relations, rights of classified employees, limitation on number of appropriate representation units.
Is there any further discussion among my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 105-21.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number 105-21 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of bill number 106-21.
Bill number 106-21, an ordinance concerning zoning, critical area overlay, resource conservation area, farm alcohol production facility.
All right, Mr. Baron, this is another admin bill. You have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Joining me again is our Deputy CAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Environmental Policy Director, Mr. Matt Johnston, our OPZ Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Miller and Ms. Crennits from OPZ and Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law. This bill was also discussed at the previous work session, but to remind the council, the bill will add farm alcohol production as an allowed use in the resource conservation area overlay of the critical area. Bill 6820 eliminated wineries in the code and established a new category of farm alcohol production for farm breweries and wineries, but only in certain residential districts. This, however, this use, excuse me, however, was not extended into the RCA. It was contemplated that this amendment would follow the adoption of the bill. Without this legislation, existing wineries in the RCA would be barred from obtaining county approvals for any improvements to their properties because wineries are not in allowed use in the critical area overlay. Happy to answer any questions council members may have. And hopefully the council will pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my council colleagues? All right, seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 106-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time from members of the public.
Thank you. We do have two individuals signed up to speak, although I think one is the same one in error that we've had previously. Do we have Mr. Devlin? Oh, and I see Mr. Devlin just, a name popped up on my screen. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Mr. Devlin, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, members of the council, Joe Devlin, Council Baradell Cosmo, and Nolan in Indianapolis. I'm a land use attorney and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. We represent Great Frogs Winery, which is located down in Harness Creek area of Anaruba County, commenced back in 2010. As a winery produces local wine from local grapes and has a great following, as I've found in working with them. And as Mr. Baron noted, this is really an outgrowth of the bill 6820, where the definitional part of the code in part was changed, where farm breweries and wineries were sort of put together as farm alcohol production facilities, which are a term, is a term that's used on the state level. And this was always envisioned to be a catch-up type of, type of an issue. We at Great Frogs, we are looking to do a few things with our facility. And so we need to get the RCA use table to include the farm alcohol production facility as it used to include wineries. So there really is no change in terms of the use aspect of this particular property or otherwise. So we would ask that you pass this bill tonight so that we can get under the proper heading, if you will, and be able to move forward without having to look back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Devlin. The public hearing on bill number 106-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 106-21.
Bill number 106-21, an ordinance concerning zoning, critical area overlay, resource conservation area, farm alcohol production facility.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 106-21.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number 106-21 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of bill number 107-21.
Bill number, sorry, I thought it was not unmuted. Bill number 107-21, an ordinance concerning capital budget and program, OPS, compel solar panels sewer and OPS, compel solar panels water capital projects, reduced and supplementary appropriations.
All right, this is another admin bill. You have the floor, Mr. Baron.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Joining me from budget is Ms. McAllister from DPW, Mr. Murphy and Ms. O'Connell and Ms. Lori Blair-Klasmyer from the Office of Law. And maybe her cat will be coming back. So want to just remind the council, this is another bill that was in front of us at the work session. 107-21 makes supplementary appropriations totaling 1.9 million for two capital projects. The funds are a result of higher than anticipated awards from the state energy water infrastructure program grants administered through the Maryland Department of the Environment. The grant funds here will be used in place of water and wastewater bonds. As the auditor's letter noted, this is good financially for the county. Our experts here are able to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing no hands, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 107-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from the members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony ahead of time.
Again, we have two individuals signed up to speak, possibly one in error. Do we have Mr. Heb?
I do not see Mr. Heb. I, he reached out earlier to say that he actually intended to speak during the invitation to audience, but he was not present for that either. So I'm not certain he was able to make the meeting.
So we may have two individuals signed up in error. In that case, the public hearing on bill number 107-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 107-21.
Bill number 107-21, an ordinance concerning capital budget and program, OPS, compel solar panels sewer and OPS, compel solar panels water capital projects, reduced and supplementary appropriations.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 107-21.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number 107-21 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the bill of title, excuse me, please read the title of bill number 108-21.
Bill number 108-21.
Thank you, I'm the sponsor, so I will give you a little bit of overview here.
One sec, let me just finish the title. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm so sorry, I got too excited to tell you about the bill.
An ordinance concerning public safety distribution of literature to purchasers of guns or ammunition.
All right, so the title tells you a lot. Basically, looking at the issue of gun violence and gun suicides, which are actually even more prevalent than on gun homicides. I have been racking my brain to think, what can we do on the local level to address this issue? We know that there are all kinds of things that we need to do in terms of providing additional mental health support, providing conflict resolution. In general, you know, providing job opportunities to help folks from, you know, picking up guns in the first place, because why would they do that if they have, you know, a great living? But one of the things that I realized as I looked into this issue is that the likelihood of death by firearm suicide increases enormously in the one month period following the purchase of a firearm. And it started making me think, this is an opportunity to make sure that a person who might be in that position, maybe won't be in that position, but a person who might be in that position, who's buying a weapon for the purpose of committing suicide, has the resources or at least has access to the resources that might be able to help them come to a different outcome. So once we started looking at that possibility, the idea of, you know, making sure that the National Suicide Hotline or other mental health resources were basically put on printed material that would be available at the sale of a firearm. We started looking, well, what other things? When I addressed this with our health officer, Mr. Kalian Rahman, we started talking about what other resources might be helpful for someone who is purchasing a firearm. And we came up with a number of other things, things about gun safety, things about using training, firearms training, gun locks. So all different kinds of things are conflict resolution that we determined could be helpful for someone who is purchasing a firearm. And so this doesn't change anything to the sale of a firearm. It doesn't add any, you know, it doesn't stop the sale of a firearm. It's simply providing information along, at the time of the sale. And so with that, the hope is to, you know, to just find ways to connect people that need resources with the resources that are available in our communities and our country. And for that reason, I hope you will support this bill. And let's see, I'm sorry, again, so excited about this bill. Mr. Baron, if the administration would like to respond, that is now you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Baron with the administration. Joining us is our health officer, Dr. Kalian Rahman, from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klasmyer. Yeah, as the Madam Chair stated, a lot of work went in, some really good discussions between the administration, the Health Department, the Legislative Council and the sponsor of the bill to craft this. As noted, it's a pretty basic requirement just to provide resources, information for resources, I should say, at the point of sale. Dr. Kay, if you want to add anything, but the administration strongly supports this bill.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dr. Kalian Rahman, you have your mic unmuted, so feel free to have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to add just a couple of points. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things we think about with suicide, which the county council declares a public health crisis, I believe almost exactly two years ago now, was that, you know, most suicide attempts are impulsive. Most are not fatal, as long as the method used isn't lethal. And firearm usage is a lethal means of suicide attempt. And most people who do survive a suicide attempt do not go on to die in the future. And most people who do survive a suicide attempt do not go on to die in a future suicide. So it's really important to be able to provide intervention. And one of the key things that has been seen in research is that, um, the risk of suicide increases dramatically in the period, as you noted, Councilwoman, uh, Radvian, in the period immediately after purchase of a firearm. And so providing education is a, is a key way from a public health perspective of, uh, sharing, sharing with, uh, sharing with public who is a particularly higher risk, those who are purchasing a firearm, about ways to address gun safety, uh, suicidality, seeking help, uh, and, and it's a, it's a cornerstone of how we address public health issues. So, so thanks for this opportunity to speak.
All right, are there any, uh, questions from my colleagues on the council? All right, seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on bill number one oh eight dash twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we did receive five submissions of testimony that were all shared with the council, have been included in the summary that is posted online and added to the record.
Thank you. Um, we have five individuals signed up to speak at this time. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Um, our first speaker is Mr. William Quick. Is he here? No, all right. Um, next up again, um, Mr. Baca, who I believe, uh, is still not here, um, but Mr. Tom Quick.
Yes, Mr. Tom.
All right, Mr. Tom Quick, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Tom Quick. I live at six zero one one Old Lawyers Hill Road, Elkhurst, Maryland, two one zero seven five. Good evening and thank you for letting me speak on the, on this proposed legislation. I own and operate an indoor gun range and retail, uh, gun store in Glen Burnie with my wife and three adult children. We've owned Cindy's Hotshots for about two years. To give you a little more background about me, I am not what most people would call a gun guy. I know a fair amount of good about guns and gun safety, but I'm more of a business person than anything else. So I'm not speaking to you from a radical, uh, gun rights, uh, persons perspective. I apologize for being not as prepared as I would like to be. I only found out about this proposed bill on Friday. This, uh, this bill is confusing to me, uh, for a number of reasons. I will do my best to explain what I mean in the two minutes allotted me for this evening. First, the proposed bill says it is targeting public safety by having a health department prepare literature to gun safety, gun training, suicide prevention, mental health and conflict resolution. My question with this is what does the Health Department know about gun safety and gun training? Um, I can't imagine that there's anyone on, on staff that is trained on guns at all. I guess the Health Department would know about suicide prevention, mental health and possibly conflict resolution. I looked up su- suicide prevention on the internet. I found a sixty-two page booklet published by the CDC. In, in that reference, it only referenced firearms. That there should be steps taken to reduce access to lethal means among persons at risk of suicide. This proposed bill does not reduce access to lethal means among persons at risk of suicide. Second, this bill's, uh, is requiring establishments that sell guns and ammunition make the literature visible and available at the point of sale and shall distribute the literature to all purchasers of gun or guns or ammunition. I've racked my brain to come up with any example of any law that requires a retailer just to distribute government-prepared literature with, with any purchase of anything. I can't come up with one. Using this logic, a law should be po- proposed, uh, that requires gas stations to distribute a brochure about the problems of drinking and driving to all who purchase gas. While we are at it, we should use the same brochure and add it to everyone's bag when they purchase alcohol at any liquor store. I know that sounds somewhat ridiculous, but too many, I think they would agree with my argument. Lastly, I want to bring up the cost of this bill. Obviously, there is a cost to Anarundel County. There will need to be a person who is paid to prepare the literature, make sure it stays current, and it will, uh, there will also be substantial cost to print and distribute brochures. There will also need to be a person that enforces the law. I like to think of, uh, the cost effectiveness and efficiency of most problems in life. I think there are other ways of reducing suicides that are much more effect, much more effective than this one. I'm sure that each council member, along with me and everyone listening tonight, would love to reduce the number of suicides in the county. There are many proven effective and cost-effective ways of doing this. This bill would not reduce suicide as well as the same amount of money. Yes.
Mr. Quick, I believe your two minutes have expired. Could you just summarize?
Yeah, I just had one more sentence.
Okay.
This bill would not reduce, uh, suicides as many, a- as well as the same amount using, you know, the same dollars in other programs. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Um, let's see, we also had, um, I'm sorry, if it's Keisha or Kasha Petty, I'm sorry, you said it before and I can't remember how to say your first name.
Kisia, yes. It's a tricky one. Um, yeah, hi again, Kisia Petty, ten oh four Jackson Street in Annapolis, and I just saw this as I was looking about, um, you know, the information about the mask, but as a new gun owner, I wanted to, um, actually find out more about it, but from what you've said, it's basically literature. What most gun owners in Maryland already have to do, whether they are new or they already have a gun, is go to a gun safety training class. Maybe there could be a little bit added to that, but as all these people already have to spend, uh, you know, three hundred dollars to get fingerprinted, checked out, it's a seven-day wait. This just seems to be an added hurdle to what is already one of the most difficult processes in the country. Maryland has stricter gun laws than most places in the country. I've been to Cindy's Hotshots and I think it's a wonderful uh, place. I wish we could have some, some more because, you know, you need to have a education and, um, yes, suicides have been, um, a, a major concern to anyone. No one wants to have that. I think, you know, the, um, the mask mandates that we talked before and this whole draconian, you know, lockdown process has created the urge that, you know, it, it, it can't possibly get any worse. I should just end it. And I don't think that responsible gun owners who already have their guns locked in a safe place, uh, contribute that much to this. Yes, you say it's one month after suicide, but believe me, it's passed through my mind and my wasn't think to, you know, blow my brains out. I would want to do something, you know, simple with pills. I mean, it's crossed, it's crossed everyone's mind in these past two years because it's just insufferable what we've been through, but I don't think gun rights are doing anything with that. So my suggestion would be to add something to the class that everyone is a part to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petty. Um, I believe we also have signed up for testimony Madison Medley. Ms. Med, oh, and Ms. Medley is here. You may have the floor.
To the honorable members of the county council, my name is Madison Medley and I am the chair of the Legislative Committee on the Anarundel County Youth Advisory Council to the County Executive, which is based in Annapolis, Maryland. I come on behalf of the council to encourage you to support bill one oh eight dash twenty-one. Every time a tragedy relating to gun violence occurs, we often ask ourselves, how is this able to happen? How can we prevent it from happening again? I, along with the council, believe that the first step to solving any problem is education. Without an understanding of facts surrounding an issue, we cannot begin to solve it. This bill ensures that owners of guns and ammunition have all the necessary knowledge relating to guns and gun safety in order to make informed decisions. This will increase the likelihood that individuals will make better decisions when it comes to guns, which will allow for increased safety. This increased safety surrounding guns will allow for people to live with less fear surrounding them. This is especially true for our youth. As we sit huddled in corners of our classrooms during active shooter drills, we hope that we will never have to use the training that we receive. This bill is a step in the right direction. With this bill, we can be assured that the owners of guns know the dangers and risks that the youth are forced to become acquainted with at a young age. For these reasons, I, along with the rest of the Youth Advisory Council, encourage all of you to support bill one oh eight dash twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Medley. Um, the public hearing on bill number one oh eight dash twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number one oh eight dash twenty-one.
Bill number one oh eight twenty-one, in ordinance concerning public safety, distribution of literature to purchasers of guns or ammunition.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions from my colleagues? Um, Mr. Volkey.
Hey, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Does the Health Department have an idea on how much the printing of these materials, design and printing will cost? Um, that was something that I think was Mr. Quick mentioned in his testimony, and I'm just curious if that's been considered because obviously there's no fiscal note.
Um, Mr. Kalian Rahman, I believe you answered this question.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we estimate that it'll be approximately, um, six thousand dollars for, uh, for printing and for the, uh, educational materials.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I have three comments I'd like to make for my colleagues' consideration. Um, first, I wanted to respond to, um, some testimony that we heard from Mr. Quick, which, um, I found a little bit funny, but for a different reason. Um, I have to note that the government does require extensive literature to be provided to a consumer or purchaser in notable circumstances such as every time I buy a pack of birth control pills, I receive the same very large pamphlet of information about what those pills do and do not do and how they may interact with hundreds of drugs that I may or may not be on. And there is no option to refill my prescription without receiving all of that mandatory paperwork. And I have to note that the same amount of paperwork does not come in any box of condoms I've ever purchased. Second, the bill, as I understand it, does not require a shop to actually distribute the literature to a purchaser only to offer it to that person. This is actually less restrictive than other information distribution laws such as with birth control pills. Third, more poignantly, my great-great-grandfather died of suicide by firearm uh, in very dramatic family circumstances, which I would be too horrified to actually tell you here. And the people who were affected, affected many generations after them. He did this at a time when there were no hotlines to call if you felt suicidal. There was no anonymous help available. And I cannot help but wonder if the simple action of offering a piece of paper with some information on resources and who you could call could have saved his life. How many who can't possibly be counted before we had such anonymous help? And indeed, the lives of a number of people who are at this meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Uh, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I was, I had similar comments to my colleague, but mainly regarding, um, alcohol sales and, and cigarette tobacco sales, all of those products have man- mandated labeling on them about consumption in moderation and causing cancer and things like that. So, um, and then our, our other, um, uh, constituent that spoke about it being a hurdle or a burden, burdensome. Um, no one is mandated to read said information, so this is just putting some information in at point of sale. Um, it seems, seems sort of benign, um, and something, um, that we can do at the point of sale to further our hotlines and other information. Um, I, I just don't see any controversy with this bill, so thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, so I, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made by my colleagues. Um, in fact, I appreciate when I put forward the resolution to declare suicide a public health crisis that the entire council joined in and, and that we did move forward with that. Um, similar to Councilwoman Lacy's family that's been racked by suicide, mine has too. Uh, with that said, one of the questions that I had was about the fines that are in the, the schedule, uh, or in this bill, excuse me. I'm looking at the schedule of fines that's in nine dash two one oh one. And I guess I'm not clear on why, if the intent with this is really educational and just to ensure that literature is getting out and the Health Department is going to print it and prepare it so that there's no cost on the, uh, seller of the firearms, why it is that we're making this a Class C violation, which is a five hundred dollar fine the first time and a thousand beyond. I think if, if we are really looking at trying to find a way to just ensure that we have educational compliance um, from the sellers of firearms, I don't know why a Class E or even a Class D couldn't be options considering that each of them sort of has a three strikes and you're out until you get hit with the highest fine, whereas Class C is two times in your hit. Um, so I guess that's kind of my question. I don't know if maybe that's a question for the sponsor or if there's some legal reason that it has to be this way, but that's my question.
Um, thank you, Mr. Volkey. I can address this. Really, because the requirement is so incredibly simple, um, what the bill asks is basically that you have a stack of this literature provided by the Health Department free of charge to be available and to be offered to a customer. Um, it's so incredibly simple that, um, it, compliance just shouldn't be a challenge. And so, um, the idea that non-compliance um, is, is an issue, uh, seems to me like, well then, you know, take it, take a, a serious approach to, to say this is important. And, um, you know, like you said, two strikes and you're out. And that's the, that's the point here, you know, it's a very simple thing to do. Um, and so that's why I, I went with the Class C. Uh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Um, I just want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Lacy and Councilman Volkey for sharing their personal perspectives. It's something that certainly haunts families for a very long time. Um, I want to piggyback on Councilman Volkey's question, um, because we did discuss the concern that I had heard from, um, some retail owners in the county. And Ms. Radvian, you were very helpful in answering how this would work on the ground. So if someone were to try and hand literature to someone who was making a purchase and they refused, so long as they made the effort, they would not be in violation. And there is the option to staple the literature with the receipt and throw it in the bag. And if it's ripped off and given back, there was an effort made there, so that would not also be a violation. Is that still true?
That is accurate. That would be, that is the intent that, um, as long as the effort is made, uh, you know, a good faith effort to, uh, give that literature to the purchaser, um, then the shop owner, the retailer has met the requirements of the law. Um, seeing no additional flags from my colleagues, um, let's see, where are we? Um, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number one oh nine dash twenty-one.
Uh, one oh eight twenty-one.
I'm sorry, one oh eight.
No, I'm just making sure I'm on.
Yes, no, you're, I, I, getting ahead of myself, one oh eight.
Okay, Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number one oh eight twenty-one has passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and thank you to my colleagues for your support. Um, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number one oh nine dash twenty-one.
Bill number one oh nine twenty-one, in ordinance concerning public safety, security measures for the sale of firearms.
Uh, Mr. Pruski, as the sponsor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, I want to reiterate, this is the security measures for the sale of firearms. I asked Madam Secretary, I sent some slides earlier. If you could just show them really quickly, um, and, and it will obviously guide the conversation. You only need to keep it up for a minute. The first one, though, I want to share just what happened recently in Hartford County. Nope, if you can go back one. Uh, as you can see right here, uh, pawn shop, twenty-three weapons stolen. Uh, if you look at, obviously you can look by the windows and other things, there weren't security measures in place. Uh, when the police obviously arrived, those were gone. If you go to the next one, please, from Fox News. Um, again, smash and grab is what this referred to in Charles County. Um, if you take a look, obviously recently in March, uh, I am not going to share that the store, uh, in Anarundel County that has been robbed twice, uh, because I think it's inappropriate. Uh, but again, I wanted to share with you, this is not just Anarundel. uh, because I think it's inappropriate. Uh, but again, I wanted to share with you, this is not just Antirrondo County, this is regional. Um, and this is why this bill is in effect. And you can close it out, Madam Chair, uh, Madam Secretary, thank you. This bill actually came from, uh, two, two, genesis from two areas. Uh, number one, I follow Baltimore County's bill, uh, which kind of guided this, uh, in the sense, because they had a similar issue where they actually had robberies. Uh, Montgomery County is also thinking about, uh, discussing a similar bill. Um, and secondly, this actually was brought forward by an Antirrondo County Police Officer um, over the concerns of illegal guns. Uh, as many of you know, um, when you have some guns that are stolen uh, and they're used in crime, they're hard to track, uh, and you don't necessarily know, uh, what's there. So working, um, obviously with the Police Department, I want to thank Captain Arbola, uh, Ms. Schuet, Liz Blair Klosmeyer, the administration, uh, and numerous other folks. And we also emailed this bill, or excuse me, mailed this bill, first-class mail, to the twenty-one businesses that sell uh, weapons in Antirrondo County, and those include pawn shops, uh, gun sales. Um, I did hear back from two of them. Uh, one obviously just didn't like the idea because it's their rights, other things, which is fair. The other one had a concern over cost. And then when I went through the bill and explained to them, uh, that they are ready in compliance, uh, and, and actually Captain Arbola brought this up in our work session about how the Police Department is willing to work with them uh, and, and make sure that the security plan is to make sure the guns aren't stolen. If you notice the title of the bill, again, security measures for the sale of firearms, that is the purpose of the bill. There is another section, uh, which deals with, um, gun shows. I've never seen one in Antirrondo since I've been here, unless somebody corrects me if I'm wrong. But we actually have zero guidance in our code in, in allowing them. And there actually is recommended, um, code that, that was brought forth in terms of making sure there's obviously security safety measures, but also tracking if something was stolen. Uh, again, this is not a certification where you have to pay. Uh, this is basically what we do right now. If you ask the Antirrondo County Police Department, if a business is, uh, comes to the Police Department and says, I would like you to review my security measures, we actually provide that now to them. Whether it's a gun store, retail store, restaurant, they will actually go through, physically visit the location and provide assistance or guidance, um, on that. We also heard the work session concerns, if I'm a new business trying to open, how would I know? Certainly with this legislation, I know I've talked with planning and zoning inspection permits. Obviously, uh, they would have that discussion. And also, if somebody was trying to expand, I actually reached out to three insurance agents, State Farm, Allstate, and an independent broker, and it's not Liberty, 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 but somebody else. But, uh, basically, uh, each of them gave me the answer that, um, if you actually increase your security measures, um, like I did in my home, I have an alarm, I got a five percent discount. Um, so if there's things that are done, and, and again, uh, this bill is to kind of put some security measures in place. Uh, I do believe that the Police Department is going to be reasonable. It was discussed before. Um, so I, I believe this is a measure, again, that does not prohibit gun sales. It does not go after somebody who has guns in their home. It has nothing to do, uh, with sales. It's, it's the business itself and making sure it has minimum security procedures, so we don't have those articles and headlines. And again, I'm not sharing the Antirrondo business. Unfortunately, that's been hit twice with smash and grab. And I don't have the total. Captain Arbola might have that. Uh, it's not relevant, but there's certainly a lot more handguns and long guns in Antirrondo County that should not be, uh, out on the street, uh, for use for criminals. Uh, and if we can prevent that, um, and working with these stores, I think that's the way to go. So again, I'll leave it there. I thank everybody um, for working on this bill. I think it's reasonable. Um, and I appreciate, uh, the Police Department Administration and my colleagues for asking the questions, um, earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chruski. Uh, Mr. Barron, if the administration would like to respond, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron, again, with the administration. I have Captain Arbola with us and Ms. Lori Blair Klosmeyer. Um, want to thank the sponsor for working with us, uh, to, to get this bill in, in good shape. Uh, I won't repeat many of the, the rationales that, uh, Mr., or Councilman Chruski referenced. I think it's pretty self-evident that, that this bill, um, attempts to tackle and, and, uh, put some rules in place that will help prevent the, those kinds of thefts and keep, um, firearms out of the hands of criminals. Uh, this is modeled off of a bill out of Baltimore County. And, um, the administration, uh, will say on the record and, and, uh, Captain Arbola, feel free to jump in. We will do everything we can to, to make sure that this is, uh, an education for the stores and give, um, stores the, the guidance that they need to get it, um, in place and in compliance. So with that, we strongly support the bill.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the council? All right, at this time, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number one oh nine dash twenty-one. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we did receive three submissions of testimony ahead of time. They were all shared with the council, they're included in the summary that is posted online, and they have been added to the record.
Thank you. Um, we have three individuals sign up to speak at this time. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. And we have, um, Miss, Mr. William Quick, again, and, um, Mr. Baca, who I believe is not here, and Kisia Petty. Did I get it right this time? Hopefully I got it right.
I'm sorry, I just meant to con-, uh, converse about the first one, so you can just take me off the list. Thanks.
Oh, okay. All right. So, is Mr. Quick here?
I do not see this, uh, either Mr. Quick in our virtual waiting room.
All right. In that case, the public hearing on Bill number one oh nine dash twenty-one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number one oh nine dash twenty-one.
Bill number one oh nine, twenty-one, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Security Measures for the Sale of Firearms.
Um, is there any further discussion from my colleagues? Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, I have a question about the bill. So I've looked at the Baltimore County Safe Act, um, which was sort of the model for this. And in the amended iteration of that bill, I believe the council provided some funding for, uh, gun shop owners who were going to be impacted by this. I think there was up to a ten thousand dollar grant, as well as some interest-free owners. Uh, was that type of thing considered in, in drafting this legislation? And with respect to the onus that it may place on gun shop owners to come out of pocket?
Madam Chair, if I could speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Chruski.
Yeah, I, I'm certainly immune. I did not look at that. Um, I did again, when I reached out to the insurance agents, because that was the biggest concern, that if you invest in your property, how does that work? Um, but I know there are limits too on grants in terms of vote funds in states. I know Ms. Fiedler asked me that same question, but there are additional funding, but no, there, there's nothing, um, at this time that I have for that. Um, I, I do also know that gun sales overall at an all-time high. Um, I, I did talk to a few owners and they said they were, they were doing fine. And most of them, uh, when they did speak to me, except for the one owner, um, was already in compliance. As I said, it was more of, uh, prevention pieces, and especially Captain Arbola, which I appreciated. Uh, even when I talked to the Baltimore County Police Department, uh, was willing to work with the business, uh, because there was a concern, you know, for instance, if you had to put up concrete ballers, you know, you can go to Home Depot and buy, uh, plastic planters and fill it with, you know, concrete or stone. There's other things that you can do to prevent a car or anything from getting in. So again, there's different levels and methods, um, and concerns. So again, I, I think overall that, that, that would be the case. Thank you.
Um, and Mr. Volkey, if you have a follow-up?
Do, thank you, Madam Chair. One of the items that I note stood out to me in the bill was the piece about, how this would regulate areas of transportation. So I think the specific language in the bill is on page two, it's line twenty-four. It talks about other place of public assembly. And then when that is defined, a little bit above that, talks about a public, a place of public assembly means anywhere used for a gathering of fifty or more people for deliberation, worship, entertainment, eating, drinking, amusement, shopping, awaiting transportation, or similar uses. So I, I guess my question with that is, given that a place of public transportation or awaiting public transportation anymore is literally anywhere because of Uber, Lyft, and other rideshare services, to what extent does this now sort of create a blanket that allows anywhere to be considered a place of public assembly? I get that there's the fifty-person minimum, but if you had sort of fifty people standing around outside of, um, I don't know, somewhere that was not a place of worship, entertainment, eating, drinking, amusement, et cetera, but they're all waiting for transportation, does that trigger at that point? I'm just trying to understand where the line is on that in terms of the way that it will be interpreted by either law or the Police Department.
Thank you. I'm going to actually have the Law Office answer that one, because that's where they kind of assisted me, so I'll, I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
This is Lori Blair Klosmeyer, uh, Deputy County Attorney. I believe we took this definition, I believe it was from what was used in Baltimore County for place of public assembly. I think awaiting transportation is, for example, a bus station or, um, you know, something, a train station, something of that nature, where you would have logically fifty or more people waiting for transportation. I guess if you have a bunch of people standing on a parking lot, waiting for a bus, but that's not a, a regular, um, place of public assembly. That, you know, like a one-time bus trip somewhere, I, I don't think that's really a place of public assembly at that point.
All right, um, are there, oh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So in section twelve-six-three-oh-one of the bill, it talks about, um, the Police Department determines that there's a violation. Um, and they may post one or more officers or security guard location at the expense of the dealer until. What is the cost? Um, I, I suppose we wouldn't know security guard cost, but what would be the cost of an officer on an hourly rate to the business?
Um, Mr. Chruski, do you want to field this question or?
I, I'm familiar with secondary plymon, because we hire them in Antirrondo schools for games. Uh, I think the rate, if I'm not mistaken, is negotiated. Captain Arbola may be able to confirm that, but when you work secondary, um, I believe it is a negotiated rate, but I, I could be wrong, because I know like HOAs will pay a certain amount and other things. So it depends on, uh, the officers in the district.
Mr. Arbola, would you like to chime in?
That is correct, yes. It's Captain Arbola for Antirrondo County Police Department. Um, the secondary rate is negotiated on private. Based on the way the bill was written, I expect that we would, we probably don't have the resources to station an on-duty officer there. Um, but we would be able to provide them information about secondary or, um, they could hire their own security. If they were such a violation that they weren't able to secure firearms and such, we would work with them, obviously, to try to get that taken care of, so it resulted that.
Thank you, Cap-, Captain Arbola, my apologies. Um, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Captain Arbola, I guess my question on that to kind of follow up is, would this really be considered secondary, or it almost seems like your officers would be posted there at the direction of sort of the command staff? So if that happens, like, if, if the captain says, go out there and go do this, is that secondary, or is that point their primary employment? And then at that point, it's, they're going to be paying it whatever the county pays the, the officer. How does that work? I don't know if anybody's thought about how that works. I mean, I know it's a May, I see that it's not mandatory that they go out there, but it just doesn't feel like secondary employment to me. It feels like you're talking about bringing in a police officer because the county isn't satisfied with what that business has done.
Mr. Chruski.
Let me add, when I was referring to secondary, uh, many of our businesses hire police officers. That's what I was referring to, and Captain Arbola also said that, that they wanted to hire their own security. Um, I think that's the intention. Uh, I, as you know, right now, uh, we have officers out on COVID and other things, so we have to cover whatever we can cover. So ultimately, I think it would be probably a discussion with the business, uh, and making sure that it's there. Um, you know, so again, uh, I would hope that people would be in compliance and want to stop what's there. And particularly, um, that ninety percent of people already in compliance, it's the, the one or two businesses, unfortunately, that don't, uh, you know, want to adhere to. And again, I, I really don't want to share the article or the public information request that I made on the police report, um, but certainly, um, it is what it is.
Uh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I'm going to, um, do a follow-up to my first initial question. So what happens in a scenario when a business is, um, notified that they are in violation? And they, um, the, the May has chosen to be a necessary course of action to have someone present, one or two individuals. What happens if there is a staffing issue, not only in the department for whatever kind of service or, and/or a staffing issue with security guard companies? Um, and then what happens in the time period if the violator has ordered whatever component they're in violation of, of missing? And because of, as we all know, we have a huge backlog and an issue with, um, goods being delivered, what happens to that business if they're just waiting for the violation amenity or mitigation tool to arrive? Are they closed? If, are they closed for three months? If, if their window bars that they would like to put on their establishment aren't going to arrive for three months because of inventory issues? How, how does that work on the ground? Both of those?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah. If, if you actually read the bill, it says there are certain, uh, rules and enforcements, and it's a Class C civil offense. Um, again, that's kind of where the, the thing goes. I, I don't think it mentions business closures. And if I'm correct with Captain Arbola, when we meet with businesses, even over the security measures, obviously it takes time to do things. The whole purpose of this is for gun safety measures. We know, obviously, that smash and grab is a big thing. I only chose two articles. I could go through six to ten, um, again, uh, from, from where this is happening. Uh, and again, I think these are, are minimal security requirements. And when I talk to Captain Arbola, particularly, uh, and speaking with businesses, I think we were willing to, to work with folks. It wasn't as you have to have this or that, it's do you have these minimum pieces, uh, that are, that are listed, um, from that end. So again, we can do a lot of what-ifs, if security is available, not available. I don't think the Police Department is going to file for that civil, uh, C offensive people are attempting to come into law. But I would say if we're sitting here and we don't pass this bill, and we have another smash and grab, and somebody gets murdered on the street because we didn't put in minimum security measures, that's a problem for me, so.
Councilwoman, or Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Barron.
Uh, Councilwoman Fiedler, to, to your, your question, um, I'll echo, uh, just for the record, uh, Mr. Chruski's comment. This is, we would work, make every effort to work with the business to find alternatives. If, in your what-if scenario, i- it's bars that are needed, we would look to find a temporary solution um, to, to work with it. And, and as Councilman Chruski stated, it's not our intention um, to, to, to do this without notice to the business, to give everybody as long a runway as possible to, to secure the facility.
Um, thank you, Mr. Barron. Uh, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. This is a question for law. So with, with this bill, I'm not quite clear how it doesn't violate the sections of the public safety article at the state level that say that the state preamps the locality on regulation of sale of firearms. So I, I kind of can already think through where I think you'll go with it, which is that you're not regulating the sale, that you're regulating the, the time, place, and manner of the sale. You're basically saying that with respect to a gun show, you know, you have to have this security, you have to do this, so we're regulating the event. We're not regulating the sale, right? I, I assume that's the way that the argument will come back. But my counter to that would be, how is it that if you're telling someone who's trying to sell something at a certain place, time, manner, et cetera, that they are required to comply with certain things, that you're not regulating the sale inadvertently, though maybe not directly? You're still inadvertently regulating the sale. I'm talking specifically about sections five-one-oh-four, five-one-thirty-three, five-one-thirty-four, five-two-oh-seven, all the public safety article. So I guess my question about all of those would be, how is it that we can even pass this with respect to, um, so, some of the places that these are, that you're trying to regulate?
So the way that the county is permitted to regulate certain sales of firearms, um, within one hundred yards of a park, house of worship, school, public building, or a place of public assembly. That's what the state law allows us. And so this is specifically applicable under twelve-six-one-oh-two to dealers that are in that area. So it's, it, it's not an argument based on regulation of sales. It's per se, it's a, it's a, it's based, it's permitted to be. The county is permitted to regulate in those areas. And then so this is specifically applicable to dealers within those areas.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Volkey, we go ahead, but I would, I'm, I'm hoping we can wrap this up pretty soon. So go ahead, Mr. Volkey. And then I see Ms. Fiedler has a flag up as well. Uh, you're on mute, Mr. Volkey.
I say, yeah, Nathan Volkey, District Three. I just think this is a pretty significant piece of legislation. I know Baltimore County debated this for many meetings. Um, so the idea that we're just going to come in on the first pass. So the idea that we're just going to come in on the first pass, just kind of pass it off. Anyway, so I think to follow up on that response, how then does the definition under 126101, where it talks about place of public assembly, and it adds in that awaiting transportation piece? Aren't we adding to the definition of a place of public assembly beyond what the state has given us authority to do? So that's, that's kind of the issue, is that we've sort of added something that's not in state code. At least that's the way I'm reading it.
I believe place of public assembly is in state code. And I have to go back and I, Ms. Shewett may recall where we got the definition. I'm not sure if it came out of Baltimore County or it came out of Comer for the state regulations. But in any event, place of public assembly is something that is in the state law.
But does the awaiting transportation fall under the state law definition of place of public assembly?
I'd have to go back and look at the exact wording. I think we were trying to clarify what a place of public assembly was.
Oh, Ms. Shewett.
Yeah, Linda Shewett, Legislative Council. My memory is also that the provision in 12-6-102 that says it applies only to dealers within a hundred yards of all these different things, including a public assembly, that's state law. And state law doesn't define what public assembly means. And so the definition of of what a public assembly is comes from the Baltimore County law.
Yeah, I just saw that. I just pulled out my Baltimore County law, and that is where it is.
Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess to follow up on that, then if state law hasn't defined what other place of public assembly means, then at that point, if we're defining that, are we not going a step beyond what state law has done in an area where we only have the ability to regulate under what the state has expressly given us authority? I ran into this with my litter bill, when I wanted to regulate litter. And I had to go to the legislature and ask the state legislature to fix it to allow in Anaronda County us to regulate litter. I mean, it's so silly. But because of the express power that the state has and the enumerated powers that they've then given to us at the locality, I guess my question on this is, how can we define other place of public assembly? How do we have that lawful authority in something where the state has only given us this big of a ball? And we're sort of expanding it a little bit. I get that Baltimore County did it. That doesn't make it legal.
Well, the state gives us the right to, place, uses the words place of public assembly. They don't define it. I think we have the right to define it. If the state doesn't like the way we've defined it, they can certainly let us know that. But I don't think it adds anything because I think what we're saying is these are places of public assembly. And I believe it's, yeah, they're specified. So I'm not sure that it's adding anything. I think that it is clarifying what the place of public assembly is in Anaronda County. Or, you know, a common sense meaning of a place of public assembly. And they, you know, they left the term undefined, so.
Ms. Shewett.
Quick response, legislative council. And I think the idea that it requires at least fifty people in these areas is a good way to define public assembly as opposed to is it thirty, or is it seventy, or is it ten? So I think that's where, that was an additional rationale for using it. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I just think it's funny that we have a bill that defined, defined something. And my colleague doesn't like the definition. I think the specificity of the definition, I don't, I don't feel like there's anything egregious. I think all of those things listed are places of public assembly. And I, I think it's, I think it's appropriately stated. If we didn't, if the bill didn't list those, wouldn't you be asking Mr. Volkey for a definition of public assembly in some, some way?
I'll allow Mr. Volkey to respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Pickard, I might accept that in this instance, because we're preempted by state law and we have to go into the box that state law has created, that's the concern. We're not operating in our typical world of zoning and land use and things like that, that we have full and complete authority to regulate, where we can say this is what it's going to be. We have a very specific sort of box framework that we're stuck in. And so that's where I think the issue comes in, is that if we make up a definition and we say, well, this is what we're going to define, something that state law hasn't defined, then we're now effectively stepping in and saying, hey, we're going to be state legislators.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I don't, I don't think that the discussion right now is really a matter of definition, as Mr. Volkey stated. I think it's more of a concern of running afoul of our authority under the state, so. That's all.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill to myself, 109-21.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Hi, and I'd also just like to comment that, you know, one of my colleagues mentioned that, you know, we're bringing this forward and putting it forward for a vote on the first pass. But I actually just, I want to note that that's quite common. The bill was introduced a month ago. There weren't any amendments proposed. I believe we addressed it at a work session. So I didn't want anyone to leave with the impression that this was somehow rushed in any manner different than any other bill. It just didn't have amendments or wasn't, there was no hold requested. So with that, I vote aye, and I'm grateful for Mr. Pruski addressing this issue. Gun violence is an issue in my district, and I appreciate, appreciate any measures that might help minimize it.
That was four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 10921 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the bill of, Bill number 11021.
Bill number 11021, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Critical Area Overlay, Marina Development and Buffer Modification Areas.
Ms. Hare, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. And I'll try and keep this brief. I think I've had an opportunity to talk with each of you about this bill. And I want to give a quick thanks to Planning and Zoning and the administration for working with me on this. The legislative summary does a good job of explaining it. There are currently a number of smaller marinas in the county, across the county, that at the time they put down lot coverage, it was legal. But since then, our laws have changed, and now they have more lot coverage than is allowable. And we have a unique provision in our code where if they go to redevelop any of their property, so not even adding any new lot coverage, but just moving something around or trying to make improvements, our code actually requires that they rip up ten percent of their overage. And that's unique to our, to our county. It's not something that exists in other counties. And so I've had some folks come to me, some business owners, and say, look, I'd really like to enclose some of the dirtier procedures that we do on the property. But as soon as I go to build this on top of existing lot coverage, I'm told I have to rip up ten percent of my impervious surface. And so I'm just, you know, I can't do that, my business can't do that. And so the practical impact is, we don't get the beneficial redevelopment. So this bill does two things. It creates two, two situations for incentives for folks. If, if marinas are going to redevelop their property such that they remove pavement from inside the buffer modification, which is the area that's closest to the water, and they're going to move it back to outside the buffer modification area. So they're going to put kind of green space down by the water and move that pavement back. They would be able to do that without ripping up ten percent of their pavement. And we went round and round with planning and zoning. This, this is not something where they could take one square foot of pavement out from inside the buffer mod and then put down a thousand outside the buffer mod. That's not how it works. It is, if you take a hundred square feet, you know, you can place a hundred square feet. It's, it's, it's limited in that fashion. The second piece of this would be that outside the buffer modification, if they wanted to construct improvements on top of existing lot coverage, they could do so without removing ten percent of their overage, provided that they're a certified clean marina. And that is a program that DNR has in place. There are about a hundred and fifty marinas, I believe, when I spoke with DNR in that program. And it is something that DNR would love to see more marinas take hold of. So I think that this incentive in that sense could actually kind of work two ways. Happy to share any, any more information if anybody's got any questions. But with that, I would ask for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Hare. Mr. Barron, would the admin, administration like to respond?
Happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron, with the administration. Coming back to the table is our Deputy CAO for land use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Environmental Policy Director, Mr. Matt Johnston, our OPZ Director, Mr. Kai Ziegler, and Ms. Kelly Krenitz from OPZ. I think this is your first appearance tonight. And Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I'll echo the sponsor's comment. A lot of work went into this bill. Everybody, I think, pulled together to take a very complicated and technical issue and get it right. This is a bill that the administration supports strongly. Will flag that because we're dealing with the critical area, we do have to deal with the Critical Area Commission. But we are confident that we have addressed the concerns. And as the sponsor noted, this bill is not to create any kind of benefit. This is to remove old, old and less environmentally friendly surfaces or structures and make improvements and make investments that in the end will have a net benefit to our bay. So I want to thank you all in advance for voting for this great bill.
All right, are there any questions from my colleagues? We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 110-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time. Actually, I'm sorry, but let me say one thing. Ms. Hare did receive a letter late in the day that was shared with the whole council. It's in the, in the file. So I apologize for that, Ms. Hare, but it did not come, the, the regular submissions. It just came in late in the day via email.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
All right, we have two individuals signed up to speak at this time. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Do we have Mr. Martin? Oh, and I see Mr. Martin's name has popped up on my screen. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, council members. I assume you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
My name is Tim Martin, 2661 Reva Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm a principal of Bay Engineering, which is a local civil engineering and land surveying firm performing various aspects of permitting and professional services in Anaronda County. I'm speaking in support of Bill 110-21. Marinas have been faced with redevelopment challenges because of the ten percent lot coverage reduction contained in 1784032 of the Anaronda County Code. This bill will assist marinas during the redevelopment process by providing additional options for redevelopment. I would suggest one amendment to the bill as a matter of clarification. On page two, line two, add twenty-five foot after the word "the." This change would clarify the twenty-five-foot modification area requirements in marinas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and we have Mr. Brian Connor. And I see Mr. Connor in the meeting now. You may unmute yourself, and you have two minutes. Mr. Connor, or if you are there, you can unmute yourselves and go ahead.
Okay, there I go.
Yes, good. Yes, we got you.
Thank you, counsel. This is Brian Connor. I am the principal owner of Rhode River Marina in Anaronda County. And this bill that has been presented is to help the maritime industry in our county for some expansion to their facilities without removing the ten percent surfaces that most small marinas do not have available to, to remove because of their size of their facilities. So this is a kind of a common sense approach to allow the maritime industry to grow, which has been a struggle for many of the years. I wish you support this bill, and thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Connor. The public hearing on Bill number 110-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 110-21.
Bill number 11021, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Critical Area Overlay, Marina Development and Buffer Modification Areas.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from my colleagues? Go ahead, Ms. Shewett.
Thank you, Linda Shewett, Legislative Council. I just have one question of the administration relating to the suggested amendment. I think it relate, the suggested amendment relates to the requirement in existing law that new building footprints and new lot coverage shall maximize and enhance environmental features in the buffer, is what the law currently says. Does that mean, I think this may be a question for Kelly Krenitz, is that interpreted to mean the one-hundred-foot buffer or the twenty-five-foot vegetated buffer?
Sorry, I was unmuting myself. This Kelly Krenitz from the Office of Planning and Zoning. The way it's written where it says buffer, we're interpreting it as the hundred-foot buffer.
Thank you.
With that, I actually have a follow-up question. So, and this is probably for the sponsor or, well, I'll try for the sponsor. Is, was the one-hundred-foot buffer the intent? Or was it the twenty-five-foot buffer mentioned as the proposed amendment? And I guess that's for Ms. Hare.
So I'm looking at page two, line two, where they suggest the amendment. It talks about new building footprints and new lot coverage shall maximize and enhance environmental features in the buffer modification area and be at least twenty-five feet from the landward edge of mean high tide and tidal wetlands. So I, I think it actually addresses that already in that section. I would agree with you.
Okay, and I see nodding, yes, thank you, in agreement. All right, any further discussion from my colleagues? I'm seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 110-21.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 11021 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill number 111-21.
Bill number 11121, An Ordinance Concerning Finance Taxation.
Did we get the twenty-five buffer that we needed?
Hang on, excuse me, we had an interruption. Someone is not on mute, but needs to be on mute. Everybody, make sure you're muted, thank you. I'm going to start over. Bill number 11121, An Ordinance Concerning Finance Taxation and Budget, Budget Grant Special Revenue Fund, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Madam Chair, did you want me to read both 111 and 112 in? Are you still going to move forward with consolidating the discussion? We do need to have separate votes, of course, on the bills. But I believe you all discussed doing that at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, and I think let's go ahead and read the title of Bill number 112-21 as well. And we'll have a joint discussion and a joint hearing. Of course, we will have separate votes.
Okay, and Bill number 11221. Also, In Ordinance Concerning Finance Taxation and Budget, Budget Grant Special Revenue Fund, Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds.
All right, we'll go back to 111-21. Mr. Pruski, you are the lead sponsor on this. If you would like to give us a little overview of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. And I think the best way to explain this is actually to read the auditor's summary, to be candid, because it can be very detailed and confusing, and then I can give the rationale. the auditor's summary, to be candid, because it can be very detailed and confusing, and then I can give the rationale. Certainly, this bill is about the grant special revenue funded by the coronavirus state and local fiscal 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 recovery funds approved by resolution of the council. This bill would require the approval appropriations of funds of more than 500,000 and allows the council to schedule a hearing within two days. That's receipt of the resolution, which requires four from the votes. And such hearing be held not more than 10 business days after the receipt of that resolution. Obviously, there's really no fiscal impact except as a check and balance. I know we've had this discussion before. The administration right now has the authority to increase grants that are already approved in the budget, whether they're estimated or not. And obviously, our controller checks those to making sure this the expenditure is sufficient. If in place, 17 projects in the fiscal year through November 30th, whatever required council approval. Again, through the coronavirus expenditures and local fiscal recovery funds, I've actually emailed Mr. Trumbauer and he responds. And I had no issue, but I want to thank again the administration because every time I've asked a question about where funds are going regarding masks, where, you know, things are occurring in terms of expenses and so on. You know, that would fit. So again, I have served both in the minority and majority on councils. And just like our budget, it takes four votes. And that's why, because somebody said, well, why would you need three versus four? And again, if there was a requirement of folks, they could certainly ask the questions. And I'd be happy to work with them if there were some guidance or needed entertaining in regards. So again, I think this bill overall just provides another way for us if people had questions from that end. But again, I'll leave it there in regards to that. Thank you.
Sorry, I was on mute there. Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Let's go ahead and have Ms. Fiedler talk about one twelve dash twenty one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Mr. Pruski, if you had tossed it to me, I could have helped you out because a lot of the language comes from my initial bill that failed previously as an emergency ordinance. So back back a month or so ago, I did introduce legislation that mimics almost entirely the language that you see in this bill. It wasn't a matter of not hearing back from the administration on anything. It was a matter of transparency and public discussion on how the county is allocating allocating grant funds specifically for COVID. There is a lot of interest from the community on certain expenditures that have been publicized, and I thought that this was a great way to bring full discussion to the public when and if three members of the council deemed it necessary. If you remember, for those listening, emergency ordinance ordinances need five votes in order to pass. Mine received four, so I immediately requested it to be brought back with the added requirement of reporting at the suggestion of Mr. Trumbauer. I thought that that was a great idea. So the difference between the two bills before the council this evening is a matter of how many council members it would require would be required to trigger that public discussion. And I we do see three council members having the authority to request an emergency ordinance hearing, which I think we're going to see happen in the next week or so. So there is an example of the use of three council members calling for a meeting or calling for an action that is right in our charter, and that's where the three came from. I think if we're we're talking about, you know, Mr. Svensson mentioned bipartisanship and working together, I think that having three as the trigger for a public discussion means that no majority of a council either now today in the future, as we know, this grant money is going to be spent over the course of several years, no majority party controls whether or not a public discussion takes place, and that is also the reason of three. So in a perfect world this evening, it would be unusual for two competing bills to pass, but I ask that you pass both of these bills tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. And at this time, I would like to allow the administration to respond.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Joining me is our Budget Officer, Mr. Trumbauer from Finance, Mr. Beard, our Deputy County Attorney, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. I think as we discussed this bill in in preview, these bills in the previous work session or the previous incarnation of of a similar bill that that did not pass. The administration just wants to reiterate, we we respect and value the council's role as the county's final fiscal authority. I think this administration has has done a lot of work to make sure that the CARES Act dollars, the the now ARPA dollars are publicly available and where that spending is online and and communicating with council members. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Trumbauer to talk about a little bit more on on this, but generally we view this choice as a policy decision for the council and will continue to work with the council on on these matters.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Let's see, is there any other discussion from my colleagues? All right, if seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on both bills, one 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 dash twenty one and one one two dash twenty one. I feel like I'm reading binary code. And I believe we have folks signed up for to testify on both bills, and actually, they are the same three individuals. So the first individual up, let's, I'm sorry, let's make sure we talk about the written submissions. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one submission for each bill that went to the entire council. It's included in the summary that is posted online and added to the record.
All right, thank you. As I noted, we have three individuals signed up to speak at this time. I believe one of them is our same gentleman. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. And I believe the first is Kami Adatola.
Madam Chair, I do not see that individual in our waiting room. I also do not see the the gentleman that has not been here for any of our public hearings. We do have Mr. Svensson, however.
All right, Mr. Svensson, thank you so much for sticking around. You now have the floor.
Thank you. Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. In my previous testimony in support of Bill ninety two twenty one, I noted the fact that I was the Assistant Budget Officer at the time that this section of our code was first enacted. And I just want to repeat that and make it very clear that the current use of this section of code with respect to COVID relief funding is not consistent with the intent of this section of county code. The idea that millions of taxpayer funds can be expended without review and approval by the county council, the final fiscal authority is just unconscionable to me. But more importantly, Bill one eleven fails to recognize and respect the citizen perspective here. It's not just about the three and the four guys. At two hour thirty two minute mark of the December fourteen council work session, Mr. Pruski spoke on behalf of this bill on on behalf of the four council members. Here's his quote. I know there was a discussion about the three and the four votes to get a resolution on the agenda. And I believe, and again, I've been on this council and served both in the minority and majority. And when voters elect the majority, that's part of the process, right? Voters make a decision. That's how it works out. Excuse me, we're talking about the appropriation of taxpayer funds here. The county charter requires the appropriation of funds be done via ordinance, not resolution. But even regardless of that, part of that process is a public hearing where citizens can hear about how the county is proposing to spend taxpayer funds. Look at the budget. Thousand-dollar place placeholders do not communicate to the community how taxpayer funds are going to be spent. That's a part of the process, folks. The administrations and county councils' majorities continued reliance on their four vote four vote majority to steamroll red legislation throughout their tenure. And to routinely ignore opportunities for compromise like this has played a major role in the excess of partisanship and frankly, brokenness of county government that we can't even get mask agreements. It's just, it's unconscionable to me, guys, please. And you did great. You had a seven seven vote majority, just the the bill right before this. You know, you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. The public hearing on Bill number one eleven dash twenty one and one twelve dash twenty one is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of both bills.
Bill number one eleven twenty one, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation and budget, budget grant special red grants, special revenue fund coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And the good news is I get another chance. Bill number one twelve twenty one, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation and budget, budget grant special revenue fund coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Svensson because he kind of threw a couple of things out there. First of all, I respect him. He was a great Assistant Budget Officer. He made some good points there. But let me be clear, as a councilman, I've actually voted with Republicans on numerous occasions, and if it's a budget thing that I agree with them, I'll vote with them. So it's not a matter of Democrat, Republican. It's a matter of whether you agree with the philosophy. So I just want to make that clear. And secondly, if we went ahead and had a three-person majority push, he's talking about partisanship. I think it would turn into partisanship based upon some of the things that have been brought up. So it's a it's a two-headed dinosaur. I understand what you're saying. Respect him. He actually brought up a good idea about ranked voting, which is interesting tonight. You know, there's a lot of things that we can discuss. That's why we have a Charter Review Commission. But this council also has to have obviously some direction and moving forward. There has to be some majority, whether it's bipartisan together, whatever it is to get things done. So again, thank him for his service. I appreciate his comments. And again, I just want to make sure that that's our, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just want to confirm, I believe this would be for Office of Law. If both bills were to pass this evening, it would fall to the lesser number of three, correct?
Under the theory that that's the one that passed second.
Correct.
Because it's second numbered. I believe that's that. That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, I would like to ask a question just with respect to the issue raised by Mr. Svensson about, you know, the council ordinarily being the one that appropriates taxpayer dollars. Is there any, you know, are we in, I mean, this has been the the practice with respect to CARES? And my understanding is that we haven't been in running afoul of county code in our practice of this. Has there been any consideration that we are running afoul? In this, and I guess this could be for Ms. Blair Klausmeyer, or I see Mr. Swain.
I can answer as Budget Officer too.
And I'll take Mr. Trumbauer. Thank you.
All right, all right. Well, how about Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer? How about I'll answer it on behalf of the Budget Office and either Mr. Swain or Ms. Klausmeyer can correct me if I say anything legally wrong. But so the power to appropriate the grant funds to the CARES Act was done in legislation when we received those funds. And then the power to appropriate the ARP funds, American Rescue Plan funds, that was done with the twenty two budget that passed. So that's where the authority comes from. And what what this bill would do is require us to submit you all a resolution for anything over $500,000 before it was appropriated. And that does differ a little bit from current practice where we give you notification. But this bill would require us to actually submit a resolution, and then you all would have two business days to decide whether or not to hold a public hearing. And just to be clear, the administration is totally fine with this concept. And I also want to take the opportunity to put on the record that the other part of this bill puts as a requirement what we are already doing in terms of reporting, which is sending the council a very detailed report every month by the twentieth, and then that is posted on the Open Rundo website for not only the council to view, but also the general public and county taxpayers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trumbauer. Would Office of Law like to add anything?
I don't think so. I think just expand a little bit on the 2022 budget. This is, and I'm sure everybody's aware, there are placeholders in the budget for these for these grants that are ultimately appropriated, and that's so they are condition can be conditionally appropriated. And that would be the process here, and the difference is this would just require some action of the council if it goes over a certain amount, if the increase in that appropriation goes over a certain amount.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I'm going to refer back to Mr. Svensson's testimony this evening and then at the discussion on the previous legislation that I introduced. I don't think that he's raising concern over being afoul right now. It's more that the process that is taking place right now in the code, that code section, Mr. Svensson worked on creating, and the reason behind that legislation was to kind of prevent Office of Law and Finance from having to come to the council for an enormous amount of grant approvals as low as $5, $25. I mean, there was constant visits to the council, so it was more streamlining efficiencies for getting grant money out of the door when the largest grant allocation that we were seeing is 250, maybe sometimes rarely $500,000 or more. This is millions of dollars. So there is public interest, and there's an incredible amount of grant funding going out the door. And I think that's where the difference is that that was not considered in that legislation that created this part of the code. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Ms. Fiedler actually covered most of what I was going to say. I think the issue too is some of these placeholders are very small when the grants come in, you know, many, 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 many times larger than than the placeholder. Whereas, you know, so we're not really the public isn't really getting a good look as to how much a grant is being funded in in a particular place. They just have this kind of placeholder. I at least that's what I took from his testimony that that is the that's the issue because that was not the intent of the legislation when it was created. And so having these public hearings would be beneficial for all the constituents.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I think that one of the important things about this is the idea that the council, again, have the ability to ask questions about how this money is being spent. For instance, I'm routinely getting questions now from constituents saying, how in the world is it that the county didn't have enough testing kits? Why aren't they converting over from vaccine vaccinations and giving people vaccines into just testing? Because it seems like in a lot of ways, most people have gotten vaccine vaccines and vaccinated. But at this point, people need testing because that's what they're trying to figure out. And I know the county bought 200,000 testing kits. I know it cost 1.6 million dollars, and I know Mr. Trumbauer shared that with us. But the county also spent 3.2 million dollars on an apartment complex to house homeless people. An important priority, no doubt about it. I'm not trying to say that that's not a good thing. But that's that money that we were giving, that COVID money, was effectively for us to deal with COVID-related issues. Now, can you argue that it fits? Sure. Has your consultant reviewed it and said, absolutely, this is something that we can spend the money on? Sure, I'm not trying to say it's an illegal purpose, but I think we should have the opportunity to discuss that. Wreckin Parks, Wreckin Park spent 2.2 million dollars on vehicles and maintenance equipment with ARP money. Again, we can't have a council hearing on that. And here's the reality, and I think this is what it gets to. You know, I think that what Mr. Pruski is arguing is this is going to turn into political theater, right? If the three members in the minority want to have a hearing, then they ask for the hearing, and they come in and they can make a big racket about these things. On the other hand, Mr. Svensson saying, look, you know, the council majority is going to block this if they're in lockstep with the administration. I see both points of view. But if I have to come down on one side or the other and say where I'm going to protect, where I think it's more important to protect, I think ensuring that the minority has protection, that they can make these requests, is going to serve the taxpayers better than making it this four-person vote that requires you to come in and get this hearing. So ultimately, that's the idea with this is that you you can have this hearing, and I think the concern of, well, this is going to turn into political theater. Well, if it is, and if there's nothing there, then it's a total waste of time and it's a total waste of effort. But at the same time, if it is actually something that's legitimate, how else are you going to get it out? So ultimately, I think that that's where, if you're looking at the balance of these two concerns, two concerns, and you have to line up in one place or the other, I certainly think that that's where I would come down and land on it. I see that I've sparked a lot of debate with my comments, as usual, so can't wait to hear from all of you.
I'm actually going to jump in with my own invisible flag, and just remind folks that, you know, there's no rule that says four votes or three votes have to be three Republican votes or four Democratic votes, you know? I know there have been calls about, you know, things becoming very partisan, but I actually look at things in a very different light. You know, over the course of this meeting, the vast majority of our votes have been seven-zero votes. There are obviously some issues that are much more contentious, but if there, you know, if there's something that our three, our three Republican colleagues are interested and look at, you know, I would certainly say, I'm, talk to me, I'm happy to consider being a fourth vote. I think that, you know, what we are worrying about, and I'll just be perfectly honest, is, you know, having, going through everything, you know, going through every single item, even though we have, I think, had very, very good access to the administration and great transparency with respect to the expenditures that they're having. So with that, I will call on my council colleague. I don't know who was first, so I'm just going to guess Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You actually said much of what I had intended to say, even calling up the many, many, many 7-0 votes tonight. As someone who has worked across the aisle since getting elected, sponsoring legislation, and I don't, I think we can count to four and count to three in lots of different ways that don't necessarily come down on partisan lines. My three colleagues that are concerned about being in the minority, every bill you've passed, you needed to make in some sort of bipartisan way. I think we've done that beautifully, actually, over the course of the last term of service. So I think we can move forward in with that spirit. I think 91% of legislation passed by this council, something like that, is bipartisan. About 78% of legislation passed by this council is actually unanimous. So I just don't think we have a big problem here. I think we can move on and maybe get to the end of this meeting before midnight, which is exciting.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm struck by a couple of things that seem odd. One is, so here we are, meeting virtually tonight. Ordinarily, we meet on the dais. The dais itself has no aisle. There's no division on the dais for party. There's no standing up and clapping with our colleagues. We sit, we're intermixed by just whoever happened to be elected by each district. And I've never thought that we had to be particularly partisan on nearly anything that we've done. But there is one area where we have always been a 4-3, and that's on our budget ordinances. And I have to say, I really hope that this upcoming budget season, we go 7-0 on the county budget. Because after discussions like this, where I realize I'm in a particular spot, I'm in a particular difficult spot, because I was the fourth vote for Ms. Fiedler's prior bill, and I am a co-sponsor of Mr. Pruski's and my colleagues' bill tonight. So how I vote is going to ultimately determine which way this goes. And I don't know that that's a partisan or a nonpartisan thing. I can see, just as Mr. Volkey said, policy reasons on both sides of the issue for both bills. And for, you know, anyone out there who thinks this is easy or you have the answer, I mean, apart from Mr. Svenson, I hope you would have spoken up, because we're, you know, seven people who have to try to craft legislation where we don't get to talk about it except in public. We don't have any mechanism for working that out, except maybe, you know, individual phone calls with each other, where we play telephone, we end up with misunderstandings, we send emails, we end up with misunderstandings or lost threads. This is not an easy job, and I think everybody out there could use a reminder of that. We're about to have even more difficult discussions beyond this one tonight that's just about money. Our next conversations are going to have to do with life-saving and life-protecting measures, among many other things that we're going to deal with for the rest of this year. And I expect, and I believe, that we can all work together, regardless of our D or our R, who cares? We all care about the welfare of the residents and the businesses of this county. That's all I care about, anyway. And I may vote yes for both bills, because, you know what? I don't think either one is particularly a bad way to go. They're both a good way to go. It's an important issue, but I do want to make sure everyone understands, money is not the only issue, nor is a public hearing the only issue. Because we also know that public hearings are not fully indicative of what everybody thinks in this county. But I do agree that it's better to have the opportunity to have a public hearing than none. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. And I want to start by saying I certainly didn't mean to put any of my colleagues in a difficult situation tonight, but I go back to the great points made by Councilwoman Lacy. When I look at the two bills, and we've just heard from our fellow colleagues that you can have a makeup of three council members that could be bipartisan, you can have a makeup of four council members that is bipartisan. What I'm hearing is the difference of three and four really doesn't matter to my colleagues at that, at this point. So I go back to my original request when I discussed Bill 112-21, and I ask that you all support both bills this evening. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam.
Oh, that was that from before?
Oh, no, it's fine. I have my one last comment. And I do appreciate all the, all the comments and all the back and forth about these two bills. They're not, to me, they're not the most important bills that we will pass tonight. But there is a, there is something to be said for the 4-3 partisan budgets that have passed. And there is some heartburn over, over budget bills that always seem to be a partisan issue on this current council. It's disappointing. It's been disappointing the last three years as we funded many, many, many important things. But we do need to get on with the work of the public, and if three colleagues or four colleagues, I prefer four, that's how I'm voting tonight, add to an agenda for a public hearing. I think we're, I think we're good either way, but I prefer, I prefer going with a majority vote to get a public hearing. That's just the way I think it should work. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no further flags or hands from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, could you please read, oh, I guess now we're ready for the roll call. Let's call the roll. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 111-21.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Ms. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 111-21 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 112-21.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 112-21 is passed.
All right. Thank you, Madam Secretary. There are two resolutions we're going to address before we adjourn tonight, and I'm amazed that we're, it's only 10:30, so good job, team. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 2-22.
Resolution number 222, Resolution approving a nomination for appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number 7.
Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sticking with us is our Deputy County Attorney. So as you recall, we recently appointed the Stakeholder Advisory Committees. Unfortunately, a member had to resign, Constance Harold, for, Percy had to resign for personal reasons. As we mentioned during the hearings for the three regions where we did the appointments, we were blessed with a overflowing list of very qualified folks. So we contacted Ms. King, who is a fantastic candidate for the committee. She works as a project manager focused on land use and does have a background in residential commercial real estate, so will bring a level of expertise to the committee and add to the work that needs to be done. So we ask you confirm her appointment this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any questions from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 2-22.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 222 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution number 3-22.
Resolution number 322, A Resolution Approving the Nomination for Reappointment of a Member to the Anorundel County Human Relations Commission.
Again, Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sticking with me is Ms. Blair Klaasmeier. This resolution reappoints Lakeisha Hatcher to the Human Relations Commission for a term expiring November 17, 2024. She is a federal employee with years of program management experience and has been an integral part of the Human Relations Commission. We ask that you confirm her reappointment.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 3-22.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Hare.
Hi.
Ms. Lacy.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 322 is adopted.
All right. Is there any other business to be brought before the County Council at this time? And actually, I'm going to raise an issue. I'd like to just have a quick discussion on whether we should hold our January 18, 2022 meeting in person or virtually. So I guess I will make a motion to, is this an appropriate motion? I feel like we did this last time, and I already forgot what we did. Ms. Schuett, is this best addressed by motion, or Ms. Corby?
I believe last time Ms. Schuett recommended on motion.
All right. I would make a motion that we hold our January 18, 2022 meeting virtually. And I guess, are there any comments or questions from my colleagues?
Councilman Pruski, second the motion.
All right. Seeing no questions, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
I abstain.
And Ms. Radvian.
Hi.
That is three in the affirmative, three in the negative, and one abstention, so I believe that the motion does not go anywhere.
All right. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I just, before we close out the meeting, I want to mention that the council will be holding public hearings on Bill number 6-22 and 7-22 during a virtual emergency legislative session on Friday, January 7. And at this point, I would like to make a motion to have a joint public hearing on these two bills. Is there a second to hold up? Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
What point of, I guess, information on this? Did you say a time on Friday?
Um, did, Madam, Madam Secretary, did, had we settled on a time?
The start time is 8:00 a.m.
Okay. 8:00 a.m. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point of order, because we have not done this frequently in our three years. Is it customary to vote on a date and time at this point? I just remember typically, I think we did our last one via email, if I'm not...
The date and time's already established. We did that already. Yeah. Sorry for the misunderstanding there. It is, the emergency legislative session is scheduled for this Friday, the 7th, beginning at 8:00 a.m., and it is a virtual session.
Okay. So, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Just, just a matter of record, because I did communicate this to Madam Secretary. I'm fine voting this evening, but I still have tentative conflicts that could have come into play that morning, so just for the record.
Okay. Thank you very much. And just to clarify, the motion that I'm proposing is a joint hearing, a joint public hearing on the bills. So if, go ahead, Ms. Fiedler. No. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
So just to be clear on the motion, it's to have a joint hearing on the bill to extend the mask requirements from the county executive and the extension of the civil emergency. You're going to hear both of those jointly as opposed to two separate topics. Am I understanding the substance of the motion correctly?
Correct. Of course, we would still hold two separate votes.
Understood. Got that.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold a joint public hearing on Bill, emergency Bill number 6-22 and Bill 7-22.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Because I'm concerned of the risk of the public being confused, I think it's better if we have separate hearings. Nay.
And Ms. Radvian.
Um, hi.
That is three in the affirmative and four in the negatives, so the motion has stalled, has not gone anywhere, so the joint public hearing will not happen.
So we'll have separate hearings for those, for each of those bills.
Correct. Yeah. And I'll advertise it as such.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. At this time, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. The motion carries. The County Council is adjourned until January 7, 2022, at 8:00 a.m., when we will meet for a virtual emergency legislative session. Please check our county website for more information about this meeting. And once again, I just want to say thank you very much to everyone for their patience tonight. Obviously, we had a really massive delay at the beginning, and thank you to OIT for getting us back on track and getting our sound up and running so we could conduct our business tonight. Everyone, have a good night, and we'll see you soon. Take care.